Get you a seat, we got a couple more up here if y'all want them. We'll get this ball rolling.
It's a lot of Baptists in here, nobody else is sitting in the front row.
Let's try, if you as well, let's stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just for a broad.
Good to see a big crowd out here on a cool Thursday night. I need approval of the agenda, understand we're gonna make an adjustment to our consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like for the consent agenda to add an item H, which is the amended contract with Henderson County for the resite.
Okay, I got, everybody okay with that? Can we make a motion just to approve the agenda with that, or we need it separate? Do we need to separate this addition? Alright, so I got a first on adding that, how about a second?
Second.
Brian got a second, any more discussion on why we're doing this or anything? Nope, all in favor? Any opposed? Here none, eyes have it. Alright, council comments, anybody got anything for council comment? Motion? Yep, I'm getting ahead of the part. Alright, motion to approve the agenda please.
So moved.
So moved, Sandra, second?
My second, whatever.
Brian got that one, all in favor? Any opposed? Here none, alright now, we're on council comments. Sandra, you want to start us out, you got anything?
Well, we've been to a lot of meetings this week, we've been to the LGCCA meeting Monday, where they had a lot of good discussion on FEMA and what they're doing to do road improvements and debris. And they discussed the Senate Bill 832.
382.
382, and the consensus that come from that, they said that we would be better to wait and see how that comes out, and then go together with all the municipalities and do a letter.
Okay, we're gonna discuss that a little bit later here ourselves, I think, in a regular agenda as well. Anything else?
Also had a good meeting yesterday with the city Hendersonville. A lot of information.
Perfect, Brian, you got anything?
Same thing as Jeff.
Any more?
I think that's it.
Yeah, I will say that Monday, we did start our strategic planning efforts for the town of Mills River, try to get a focus on where we're gonna be 10 years from now, if that's even possible. But we're trying it, alright, manager updates.
Thank you mayor and council, first and foremost, I just want to say to piggyback off the strategic planning effort I've mentioned, that yes, the strategic planning effort for the town of Mills River kicked off on Monday with council, and then on Tuesday, we followed suit with a staff retreat as well, and that's the beginning of the process, it's gonna be about six to eight months in total, and so it's gonna be an iterative process, and I look forward to continuing providing updates and informing everyone as we move through that process. The, what may be of interest to many in the room today, FEMA and and other partners have announced a farm slash ag recovery job fair, that is on Tuesday, January 28th, and that's at the Dana Community Center from 8am to 7pm, and so that information, we're also gonna be pushing out through our social media sites as well as on our website, because we think it's gonna be vitally important to push out that information as much as possible. The another item is that, we found out today that Brickyard Road, the bridge at Brickyard Road is now closed for repairs. That, we're gonna be pushing that information again online and via our social media channels. That scheduled closure, closure with the NCDOT is scheduled through September 26th, 2025. So again, so approximately eight months that that's gonna be down for repairs, there are detour signs and detours available around that area. The Jim Player, who's a formerly Sergeant Jim Player, you know, as a reminder, retired from the Henderson County Sheriff's Office, a vital part of our, of our contract and our partnership with the Henderson County Sheriff's Office for the last five plus years, here in the town of Mills River, just as a reminder, we had to the family had to reschedule their event here, that drop-in event for the town, due to snow and the snowstorm, so that's rescheduled for the Saturday at 2pm here in the comments room. The, I apologize, it is next Saturday, not this Saturday, if you show up here this Saturday, you'll be sorely disappointed. Next Saturday. The, well, we discovered a sewer line break on 191, right in front of Mills River Village, that was promptly responded to, and I just wanted to let people know that if you saw any work being done out there today, it was dug up and repaired today, so that's, so it's a quick turnaround there, and I want to thank our partners, but the MSD for their work there. And also, a couple of things from the Parks and Recreation side, I'll just point out that the, you may see if you've come to the park, that there are a couple of signs saying, you know, the water's not working in certain areas, I'll mention that we, we are just like any other location that are dealing with very cold weather, and we've had some water breaks as well, water pipe breaks, so what you'll see is the water that goes to the baseball field and to the Hickory Shelter, that, that pipe froze and it's currently obviously now, not supplying water to those areas, and so once it thaws enough, we're actually gonna be able to repair that. So I just wanted to know, if you see those signs around, we're gonna be working through that as fast as possible. The Red Cross has a blood drive here tomorrow for the community, it is in this, in the comments room, it's from 10 to 3pm tomorrow. I highly recommend anyone who wants to come out and donate, please do so. And then, last but certainly not least, on my list, the as a reminder, our finance director has announced her retirement effective March 1st, If you know of anyone who may be interested in joining our fantastic Mills River staff, please encourage them to apply. The admin assistant, uh, role is also, uh, still open. It's open until filled. Uh, that review process started, uh, today. And again, that's open until filled. So again, if you're looking, if you know of anyone who me think may be a good fit for the community, uh, for the town of Mills River staff, please by all means encourage them to apply. And that concludes my, uh, managers updates.
Okay, uh, public comment. Do we have anybody sign in? This would be if you just want to come in here and talk about the weather or anything like it. If you want to talk about the National Flood Insurance Plan Program or, uh, this rezoning public hearing or any of that, we'll, we'll have a section in there for y'all to discuss that. Um, Jeff Young, you want to wait? I see you got NFIP or do you want, you need to go? Okay, alright, come on. Yeah, wait till then? Okay, thank you. And then Bradley, you want to wait too? Alright, sounds good to me. Anybody else got anything just in general you'd like to discuss on this before we get into our regular stuff? Hearing nothing. We'll move on. Uh, a motion to approve our amended consent agenda, please.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff, I need a second.
Our second.
Sandra, uh, any discussion on this consent agenda or any part we added?
Just take a moment to thank, uh, Mr. Kimsey, Mr. Edwards, being willing to serve our committees, the planning board and the Parks Trail Recreation Committee. Um, these people aren't paid to give up their time. Sometimes it's, uh, it's a thankless job, but I just want to say thanks.
Yep, indeed. Alright, I got a first, second. Any more discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. Eyes have it. Onto our regular agenda, presentation, presentation of our financial dashboard quarterly. Sue Powell.
Good evening. Um, this is going to be a six-month financial update through December thirty-one, two thousand four, I'm sorry, two thousand four, twenty-four. I don't know what year I'm working in. Um, and, um, I'm going to go in, into more depth than normally because of new council members. Um, and if you have questions during the presentation, please just jump in.
Alright, uh, this is whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Oh, okay. I see.
Okay, yeah.
I got my book open, but we ain't caught up on the computer.
Okay, um, if you go on to the next one. Okay, um, you'll see elements of the, um, financial dashboard that I usually do, um, in this presentation. So first, we're going to start, I always go crazy directions. So, um, operating budget, I'm going to go on the left to the right on this one. Um, many of these items are, um, well, not many, a few of these items are more than fifty percent over the budget. Um, and I'm going to highlight those. Your capital reserves, for example. Um, that's an expenditure that's based on budget decisions that council makes or has made in the past. So those get expensed the first of the year, and we'll go deeper in, into, um, detail on that in a few minutes. Um, economic development includes donations made to the nonprofit organizations of Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development and Ag HC, as well as incentive obligations. This year's obligations were to Lindemar and to Gaia Herbs. Um, next year's, um, next fiscal year is the last payment to Gaia Herbs, uh, but there are still six more for Lindemar, and those are the only obligations you have remaining. Oh, sorry, can you go back? My bad. Um, on the capital budget, um, you'll see it looks, um, a little bare, but the only expenditures we've had under your, um, that have, were approved under the budget are for the playground, um, access project. Now, to be careful.
Sue, would you take just a minute to explain to the public, the economic development, how if we give them an incentive, they must pay their tax, then we return the portion that we promised back to them as long as they've met the guideline set forth early on? Is that a good explanation?
Uh, that, that's an excellent ex- explanation, and it isn't just anyone who can get this. Um, the Partnership for Economic Development or Ag HC will bring forward a candidate. Um, they, council gets many details about the type of, um, investment they'd be making in the town. And then if they so choose, you, they can enter into an agreement with council where we would pay, um, incentives after each tax year is, uh, their taxes are paid, but also after a certain level investment has already been made.
That's pretty, pretty good explanation. Thank you. I get asked that a lot, so I want you to do that for me.
Alright. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, revenues. Um, town of Mills River has been very fortunate that, um, our revenues are high this year. Um, in particular, our property tax revenues are at ninety-seven point eight percent of our budget. Um, but just, you should note that we do not budget for one hundred percent of our levy as being collected. So it were, our collections are only at ninety-two point seven nine percent as of January sixth. More has come in. Uh, but I'll let the tax department give you an updated report. Um, sales tax revenues, permits and fees, and interest on investments are all ahead of our budget. Interest rates have begun to come down, though they're still above four percent right now. Um, and we, there'll be more detail on the sales tax, because I'm sure you have questions on that with, um, in particular, like effects from the, uh, parks and recreation fees. Um, they were affected by Hurricane Helene. Um, what, since the park flooded, we were, um, we needed to cancel many reservations for the month of October. Some of those have been rescheduled, but, uh, for the most part, it was just refunds made. So expenditures, um, most of our departments are at or pretty close to fifty percent of their, uh, budget for the year, which is exactly where you'd hope they'd be, um, at the end of the second quarter. Um, information technology is a little ahead of our budget, but, um, it, it's hard to budget for increased costs of maintenance agreements. They just come in higher. Also, we've had a couple of one-time expenditures that have gone there. Um, but for the new council members, the library is actually a division of Henderson County, but because we leave, we lease the space to them, we go ahead and, um, budget for and track all expenditures that we have to put out. Um, just so we have an idea of what it's costing us to house them. Um, mostly it's utility costs. They, they pay for part of the, um, garbage pickup. Um, and unfortunately, utility costs are higher this year, as we all know, um, even before this cold spell. Um, but even the, the week after the hurricane, when we were running this building on a generator, uh, they, that department shows part of those costs as well. Um, and if you're, if you're looking closely, you'll notice debt services also had a budget, but this reflects that the agreements were signed with payments due on the third of the month, so we actually have to make a payment the month prior. So we've already made seven payments at, by the end of December, but it does equal out into twelve by June because we do hold an extra pay. Okay, now don't be alarmed, the top line takes the turn next year, but that is, it reflects five years of revenues, four full years, and then six months. Um, the bottom trend line, I'm going to go in reverse, bottom trend line is ABC revenues. Um, unfortunately, those are, that's a one-year pay, one-time payment each year, and it comes in May. And I'll just remind council that those funds have been allocated for its land preservation. So when they come in, they will go there for the next year. Um, the next lineup is motor vehicle revenues. Um, once the state took over collecting this tax, the, um, collecting percentage went to a hundred percent. So this trend line reflects almost exactly half of what we would expect to get. Um, utility sales tax, just the yellow line, includes video, video programming or cable TV, telecommunications, electric power and natural gas. These revenues are received in the month prior to the end of the quarter, so our next payment will be in March for the end of December. So we've only received two, uh, two payments this year. Um, we keep being warned, the, the next lineup, it was sales tax, we keep being warned by the state that sales tax revenues will go down and/or that at least the increase will slow. Fortunately, Mills River has not seen this yet. Um, we're currently at sixty-one and a half percent of our budget and, um, are, actually, we've already received um, funds for what would have been our, for November in January, and that's going to put us over seventy-two percent of our budget. So I'm, I'm encouraged that we're going to come in over budget this year. Um, and we're, we're twelve percent ahead of last year, so we're doing well. Um, revenues for October were down. Um, Mayor Gottes asked about this a few meetings ago, um, to keep an eye on that. Um, they were down about fifteen percent, fifteen thousand from the prior month. Um, and that's about ten thousand down from, um, what the average we received this year. But then receipts for November, the next month, uh, we have completely rebounded. So, um, that's good news for the town. Okay, um, property values. This is actually your tax levy. Um, the actual values of your properties for the last five years. Um, and as you can see, we, we've increased dramatically. Um, in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we were at a million five. And for fiscal year twenty-five, we're at two point two million. Um, that number will adjust just a little as tax releases and discoveries are made. But, um, basically, this, this reflects your dramatic increases in property values uh, in the town, also all of the new, um, permits and construction and, um, yes. But just FYI, I said two point two million. This is billion. These are billions. It circled it, so I remembered to say that, and I didn't. Okay. Fund balance. We've talked about this. We talk about this every quarter. Um, but will I, what I will spotlight for you is capital reserves for town hall are at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Um, they've been saved by allocating three quarters of one cent of property tax revenues each year. Um, then capital reserves of the park are at four hundred and twenty-three thousand. It's the same. Um, we made an allocation one year, and since then, it's been three quarters of a cent of property tax. Each year when we adopt the budget, you adopt a capital reserve resolution reallocating those funds. And it is always council's choice to not do that if you need to fund somewhere else one year. Um, total uncommitted fund balance is four point seven million. Um, but as I said earlier, a lot of our capital projects have not been, um, actually, that has nothing to do with capital projects, never mind. You have four, four point seven million unallocated. Our assigned fa- fund balance is eight hundred forty-two thousand six ninety-four. And that number comes from, um, we have a fund for building, assigned fund balance for building maintenance that was created as a requirement of a USDA loan, USDA loan for this building. Um, once the loan was paid off, council voted to maintain that fund. Um, we can always pull for it if we need it for maintenance. We've so far only pulled for it from it twice in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen for HVAC repair and a gas leak. But it is always available if one of our units just dies or something. Um, law enforcement reserves were als- are also in there. They were created as part of a three-year contract. The first three-year contract we made with Henderson County Sheriff's Department. Um, taxes were increased to cover the cost of that, um, and a, and a little bit more. And so for those three years, any additional funds went into this, into, um, assigned fund balance for future law enforcement. Um, land preservation is another part of our, um, assigned fund balance. Um, in the spring of twenty twenty-four, uh, council chose to, uh, create a land preservation program. Uh, assigned an initial five hundred thousand, um, to cover costs. And then, as I said earlier, ABC, ABC revenues will be added each, each year towards this. Oops, the back. Alright, major project updates. I don't have all the details, but I can tell you how we during financial. Uh, for example, on the UDL, we have budgeted two hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's an ongoing project and we have not seen an invoice as of yet. Um, as I understand, that will be, as progress is made, we will occasionally see what. Um, the Playground Access Project, again, is an ongoing project. Um, as you can imagine, the project's a little stalled because of the weather. Um, there is a grant that we've received towards this project, but it is a match grant and the budget is three hundred and fourteen thousand. With, and right now, we've only spent twenty-four percent of that budget. Um, FEMA is another huge project. Uh, I'm labeling it FEMA. It's, um, post hurricane expenses that we hopefully will be able to get reimbursed from FEMA. Um, we've budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand in a separate fund. Um, right now, we spent less than eight percent of that budget. But as I understand it, there's a contract for debris removal that is going to come forward at some point and will take a large, much larger chunk of that budget.
And if I may, just briefly, and I've, and I can reiterate this during the business meeting as well, it's a potential future agenda item. But I believe now that, uh, we're getting to the phase of those larger scale projects and moving forward, and I recommend potentially at the next council meeting or the council meeting after to present a FEMA project update presentation for council, just to allow you all to have a better idea of where we're at within the FEMA process, but then also to provide that context, uh, for the community as well.
Okay, and then the last project I will spotlight is strategic planning. Um, you've already participated in part of that. Staff has participated in part of that. But this is good news. We budgeted fifty thousand dollars for that, uh, and Mr. McCarron was able to, um, get us under contract through the School of Government, excuse me, for twenty thousand dollars, and we have not seen, um, an invoice on that yet. Any. Okay, well, by the end of December, we did not have an invoice. I personally have not seen. Okay, any questions? Other information you wanted?
Good and thorough, I'll give you that.
Well, every once in a while, you need to have this. Every once in a while, you need to have this information.
Yeah.
Good job on saving money. Thank you.
It was, it was through the informal bidding process, they were also the lowest qualified bidder.
That's good. You mentioned that the information technology contracts about predicting increases. And just an idea, I know a lot of the contracts that we sign, on the government side, they initiate this, is they'll sign a five-year contract, and then they regulate that it's only a 3% increase. So that may be something that we need to look into our contracts, and that way, we can budget every year, we know that it's going up 3%, and that's it.
Excellent idea.
Anything else for suit? You're none? I will move right along. Be the rezoning public hearing for R24-04. But Mr. Malatchek will lead us in.
And council, while he's getting set up, council may notice that there's a little bit of a different setup than the last time, and we figured that there may be a, a a larger crowd today, so we decided to pivot over here, but just to provide that context.
Good evening. So tonight, we are holding the public hearing for rezoning request 2404. And I believe council needs to go through the public hearing procedures to open the public hearing before I begin.
Okay, well, somebody put us in the public hearing, you got notes on the table there to do so.
Yes, I would just direct council to the white sheet in front of you that's labeled legislative public hearing procedures.
Make a motion to enter into legislative public hearing.
Well, thank you, Brian, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandra, any discussion on what we're doing? You're none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're none, I just have it. We're in public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the, the next item, item number three on the list is for you, for you as well.
Oh. Okay, yes, sir. Does anyone here have any conflict of interest moving forward with this, any direct ties to any of this property or any such thing?
No.
Nope, me neither. All right, move along. Staff, whenever you're ready to present, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay.
Now it doesn't work. Oh, now we're going too fast. Anyway, on October of last year, we got a rezoning application from the applicant, Patrick Pierce of Selwyn Property Group Investments for this corner two-acre parcel at 315 Banner Farm Road. It's currently zoned neighborhood commercial MRNC, and the request is to go to light industrial MRLI. Got about two acres, it's got an existing older single-family home on it with some outbuildings. Again, at the corner, northeast corner of the intersection across from the school. Here's a little vicinity map, just to get an idea of where it is. So here's the parcel in question right here. I'll go into this a little more in the next slide, but the applicants also own this 12-acre vacant field right here that we've actually been working with them, maybe almost a year and a half, two years, on administrative staff review for a warehouse distribution development. That parcel is already zoned light industrial. But again, that gives you context of where the property is. Here's a survey provided by the applicant, so again, you can see their existing site is that 12-acre vacant land, and we've got the site to be rezoned, the two acres of the corner. And going into a little more detail now, remember, when we do rezonings, we want to consider all potential uses of the requested zoning district moving forward. So it's a little unusual that we have site plans that will be shown in this hearing, but this was provided by the applicant as part of their package to basically explain why they're going through this process. So again, they own the 12-acre parcel behind the, the subject property being rezoned. They had intended to purchase that property in the past, but the seller was unwilling to sell. An opportunity came up, and they've now have signed a purchase agreement with that two-acre landowner at the corner. But obviously, to incorporate this into their existing development, that existing 12 acres, they would have to have the zoning match. So rezone from neighborhood commercial to light industrial, which the 12-acre tract is already zoned that way. Again, a little detail just on what we've been looking at, the staff level. Currently proposed for just the 12 acres was about 170,000 square foot warehouse. And then the proposed example site plan incorporating the two acres may result in a 220,000 square foot warehouse development, so increasing by about 70,000 across the whole development. Again, that, that is just an example, that doesn't mean if this rezoning goes through, this is guaranteed to happen. And again, you can see, I'll highlight it again because it's very important, remember, if, if you do a rezoning approval based upon a specific site plan, it's contract zoning, and that's illegal in the state of North Carolina. So we have to consider all potential uses of the requested zoning district. Here's a brief overview of the site plan staff's been working on with the applicant for the 12 acres. So you can see one large building here, the dark gray, a large truck court in the back. Truck traffic was gonna be coming this way off Banner Farm Road, and then employee parking down here off Schoolhouse Road. And then there are the two acres of the corner. So if this development were to go through, and again, because it's already zoned light industrial administrative staff approval, you'd basically have a warehouse being built around a single-family home at the corner. So if the rezoning goes through, and if the applicant is able to close and purchase the property, this is a potential of what could happen. Again, it shows two, building is not as large as the last one, but basically a unified site along that whole corner. So what's neighborhood commercial? This is the current zoning of the two acres of the corner. I like to call it, you know, light, light commercial uses that are compatible in a residential area. So usually, it's retail or services and enclosed buildings, something that's not gonna disturb surrounding residences and offices of many types. And then obviously, single-family homes, childcare centers, and some similar, again, light impact uses. Some others allowed with a minor special use permit, hospitals, vet clinics, restaurants, home occupations, et cetera. So the proposed zoning district or the requested zoning district is light industrial. So I meant to provide a place for those industrial uses that are incompatible with normal business areas. That can include manufacturing, distribution, storage facilities, fabrication, processing, et cetera. And then secondary uses allowed by right, because these are larger facilities, would be cafeterias, sales facilities, recreational facilities, et cetera. So again, I'm gonna hit on this again. Every use in the light industrial zoning district is possible, could be permitted administratively if this zoning goes through and is approved for light industrial. So again, the site plans are here for context. But I'd, I'd caution us getting into discussions about specifics of where traffic impacts or where driveways might go and stuff like that. So here's the current zoning map. Everything in pink is currently zoned light industrial. You can see the subject property at the corner. The little green rectangle here is the subject property. And then if I flip forward to the proposed zoning map, really, all the applicants proposing to do is fill that corner in. So as part of any rezoning, we look at the comprehensive plan and future land use map consistency or lack thereof. This property is in the community center district. Here's the town map, so we're looking kind of right here at Schoolhouse and Banner Farm. And then zooming in, you can see it is in that red area designated as community center. Now, what does community center call for with future land uses? I'm gonna have two examples here, because we've seen this once before with a rezoning, I think, last fall. There's a little bit of inconsistency in the comp plan here. So the description basically says, community center is meant for a mix of uses, including commercial, industrial, residential, and ag. But if you go to the future land use chart, industrial is listed as a not desirable use. And staff has interpreted this, and we stuck with our, the same interpretation in the last case that in, that this is incorrect, that the description itself, by promoting a mix of uses, should include industrial. And it seems like when the comp plan was adopted, something was put in the wrong column. Again, that's just our interpretation. We always look at spot zoning when we're rezoning a specific property. We do not believe this would result in a spot zoning challenge, very unlikely, because most of, there's a lot of land in this area, also the adjacent land zone light industrial. But per state law, and again, to protect the town from any challenge, council should adopt a statement of reasonableness, and there's drafts of those in the packet. So the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this, found it consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map, and staff's recommending approval for the same reasons. And again, just from a planning perspective, it's probably better to have a unified site at that corner than having a warehouse built around a single-family home. So council action is to approve, deny, or table. We've got the statement of consistency, both for, both possible decisions, and the statement of reasonableness for both possible decisions. And then you do have your formal staff reporting your packet with additional attachments, the full application packet from the applicant, the agreement of purchase and sale of the property, basically giving the applicant, you know, appointing them as an agent, giving them the ability to pursue this rezoning. And then I did wanna note that public notice was provided, so we have the public notice timeline and certificate of mailing public notice letters there as well. And that concludes my staff report, and I will just mention the applicant is here tonight as well to answer questions.
And any questions from staff before we move forward? You're none? Is the applicant a property owner here wanting to discuss this at, at all?
Perhaps to answer any questions or any comments you have for us, but
Okay.
That's given a really a very accurate description of what, of what we have there.
Okay. Is there any other parties here present that would like to discuss this in any fashion? You're none? Let's see. All right, I guess we need to discuss this council and see what we're, what you think about it. What yourselves?
I think it's reasonable.
Yeah. Trying to tie it all together.
It's not in conflict with the comprehensive plan.
Everything around it's already there.
Can you, Mr. Malatchek, or can you pull up the description in the ordinances for light industrial on our ordinances? Yeah.
For clarification, Councilmember Kimball, are you suggesting or asking to go back on the slide, or is it?
No, in the actual ordinance.
In the actual ordinance, just wanted to confirm, thank you.
I'm looking at it now, and Kevin will pull up, pull it up on the screen in a second.
Anyone living in the house now?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
So the full list is about 16 uses, but under manufacturing, which is number 12, there's a number of uses listed in there, basically to cover different types of manufacturing, processing, distribution, fabrication.
So what I'm curious about, if you go up to the top. So it says any use that is not inherently obnoxious to urban and rural areas because of noise, odor, smoke, light, vibration, dust, or any use or storage of dangerous chemical and or materials. So by zoning it light industrial, is it possible that they could store dangerous chemicals in light and materials?
I believe you can only store hazardous materials with a minor special use permit. So that would be gasoline, oil, or fuel products. And then any, any use that would propose the manufacturing, use in the manufacturing process, storage on the site of any chemical in any form that may be hazardous also requires a minor special use permit. And sorry, that's under section C.
Did that answer your question, or?
Yeah, as long as it's under special use, what I'm concerned is, since we're considering all uses, is if we approve this, they don't have to do what they're saying they're going to do. So they could sell the property tomorrow to somebody who wants to produce an ethyl methyl chloride plant. And we, and then we've allowed them to put it within 50 yards of an elementary school. So that's my concern.
What else you've got? Anything, any other discussion? Additional questions for staff? We got, you don't have anything else, we're going to ask to close this public hearing portion.
The land already, already around there is zoned as to what we're changing this to, correct?
Do you want to see the map one more time?
Well, no, I, I remember the map, it's just that corner right there. So we're just changing that one spot to meet the other, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You can see the pink there, if he backs up a little more, he'll show you the.
I remember.
There you go. Yep. No other questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Jeff, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandra, any more discussion on closing? You're none, all in favor of closing? Aye. Any opposed? You're none. All right, so at this point, I entertain a motion to approve, deny, or table.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve R-24-04 rezoning 315 Banner Farm Road as presented and adopt coordinates 2025-01.
Okay, and a first, how about a second?
I'll second.
Sandra goes second. Any more discussion? You're nothing? All, all in favor? Any opposed? You're none. Congratulations. Be glad to have you as a neighbor.
Mr. Mayor, as a, just, there's one more step as well, yes, sir.
All right.
Two more steps, I apologize.
Yeah. You, y'all got them in front of you.
I make the motion to, for the Mills River Town Council to find the proposed zoning amendment, R24-04 is consistent with the town's making Mills River 2040 comprehensive plan and future land vision use map and adopt a statement of consistency as presented.
I'll second.
All right, first, and Jeff second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And then you need the reasonableness statement also, I'm gonna make it on the back page.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, the Mills River Town Council finds proposed zoning map amendment R24-04 is reasonable and in the public interest and adopt a statement of reasonableness as presented.
All right, it's first, second?
I'll second.
Brian got that one, any discussion on that while we do it? Anything? Nope. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? You're none. It's official. All right. Moving right along, welcome to stay areas or welcome to go, either one. It could get interesting here after a while. We got a lot of our buddies here. Moving on to see the discussion and consideration of the National Flood Plane program.
So yeah, we, we did a in-depth overview, I think, of the program at the last meeting, and council directed staff to begin drafting the NFIP application and resolution of intent to participate in the program. And then I think we were directed to bring this back to council at this meeting for further discussion. We do have Steve Garrett here, the state coordinator for the National Flood Insurance Program. So if council has any technical questions directly for him, he is here to answer those in person as well.
Right. Discussion, questions, you're bound to have a bunch. Start with us, and then we'll ask our. Start with us, and then we'll ask our constituents what their opinion on all this is. Y'all thought about it much, brought up any concerns or? I will tell you that, that I would like to have some security from our state leaders here that works in this all the time, that if we did go into this, we could put our own credentials to it as to what we would like to see in that floodplain. And Bill three eighty-two somewhat concerns me. Should I be concerned about that? I talked to my lawyer today. She says it's a gray area. We probably can't mess in there too much right yet. So I'd love to hear what y'all's opinion of that would be.
Yes.
Is our mic on over there? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we have the same concerns, and School of Government has put out some information on their website about that particular Senate bill session law about the downzoning. So we're still trying to see what the potential impacts may be in the information provided by School of Government, and maybe you can talk to the legal counsel as well. Is that keeping your flood ordinance separate from any zoning could potentially alleviate having that construed as a downzoning? But it really just kind of depends on any other legal challenges or what happens to that particular provision in future sessions, and if they decide to rescind that, or if there's any other challenges to that particular amendment to the one sixty D.
Gotcha. Is there any way that you see, we've always made ag exempt here, you know? Is that even a possibility to write that into our plan or to get into being part of your program or the federal program?
So for the National Flood Insurance Program, there are no specific exemptions. However, there are certain types of activities that typically don't require permits. So for example, mowing your lawn, you know, there's no expectation that someone's private lawn in there in the special flood hazard area is going to require a permit. Typically, you know, tilling the soil or plowing, planting annual crops and harvesting those crops does not require permits. What requires the permits and the regulatory requirements is dealing with buildings, which we consider structures, or any other type of obstruction to the flow or conveyance of floodwaters. So if we're putting in new culverts or bridges, or making any adjustments to the stream channel, if you're realigning the channel, moving the stream, of course, there's other state and federal requirements for that as well, potentially. So those would all need to be considered as part of the flood permitting and may also require hydraulic and hyd- in hydrologic analysis to show that you're not going to cause increases to the flood elevations that may impact adjoining properties or structures already in the flood hazard area.
Who would pay for that hydraulic and engineering?
So that's the responsibility of the property owner or applicant that's conducting the project.
Okay.
Could I ask, are there any of those studies required now? For the floodplanes there, whether we call it that or not?
So because the community doesn't participate and doesn't enforce an ordinance, there's really no requirements. However, other agencies like Department of Transportation, because their activities occur on state property, they do conform to the requirements, and we've developed an agreement with them and have been working with them for almost two decades to maintain compliance with the federal requirements. So they've been a good partner, and, you know, they do a lot of work in the floodplanes with crossing streams and that sort of thing.
What else, so got?
So if a, if a structure were to be built in the floodplain, if we, if we're the NFIP, it would have to be, would have to show that the structure's not going to cause a rise, and it would have to be floodproofed.
Right, so, you know, there's, there's two different kind of components. We've got the special flood hazard area, which is the entire floodplain area, typically shown now on our maps is the blue shaded area. The floodways or non-encroachment areas are those areas closer to the channel. Floodways are depicted as a white and blue hatching. Non-encroachment areas aren't mapped, but we are providing visualizations for some areas. But we do provide that engineering data in the left and right of the center line facing downstream in a table in the, in the flood insurance study report. So in those areas, we want to reserve that to convey that base flood or one percent annual chance or hundred year flood, and that's where we're, we get into the no rise. If you encroach into that area, that's where you would have to do that analysis. In the fringe areas, structures can be built as long as they meet the requirements of the ordinance. The minimum NFIP requirement say that the bu- top of the bottom floor in a riverine situation has to be at or above that base flood elevation, and any enclosures below that living space floor have to allow for the passage of water underneath it to prevent the structure from collapse. So we need to equalize the pressure within that enclosed area or build it on a pile or open type foundation. The, the, the basic idea is we don't want to have increased damage exposure or risk to those buildings that we build in those sort of high hazard areas and try to protect them from having, you know, catastrophic losses. Now, again, our, our sort of baseline is that base flood or one percent annual chance, commonly known as the hundred year flood. With a lean, we saw, you know, something way beyond that in a lot of areas, and also have to consider velocity and the depth of flooding. I was out in the Bat Cave area earlier today, and that was just, you know, catastrophic damages, but that water was probably moving much faster than some areas that may be nearby. But can, you know, homes are completely just gone. So that's the kind of stuff we want to prevent, but when you have an event that exceeds that one percent, you know, it's, it's hard to save everything when you have something that catastrophic.
And we're talking about a structure in the floodplain, it doesn't necessarily have to be an inhabited structure. It would have to comply, whether it's inhabited or not. Is that correct? Like a barn or a shed?
Barns can be wet floodproofed instead to allow the water to come through. So if it's only used for parking or storage and not have any sort of, you know, plumbing fixtures for bathrooms, office space, or workshops, then that would be allowed uses. What we want to do is protect the areas that people might be in, in inhabited space. You know, office space would be the same thing, or a building like town hall here. You know, we want to make sure that that, you know, is either dry floodproofed or elevated to prevent the water from infiltrating the structure and causing damages. So use is important, and there are some publications that FEMA has put out about accessory and agricultural structures that could be taken into consideration.
So even if someone wanted to build a shed to park equipment under, they have to do the, the flood study, the no rise study, the that be required for an uninhabited structure if it were built so that water could flow through it? Or would building it so water could flow through it be the action required by the study?
No, so if the if it's built in that floodway or non-encroachment area, it would still be considered an obstruction, and we'd have to try to understand how that obstruction would potentially impact the, the water surface elevations. However, if it's outside of that, you know, that study would not be required because they...
Floodway.
Yeah, the floodway.
The floodplain is a broader area than the floodway.
That's correct, right? And also, I'll just point out that the state, you know, we have a general statute under one forty-three that gives the communities the ability to adopt an ordinance that meets or exceeds the NFIP. And then it also ties back to one sixty A, one sixty D, and one fifty-three A, which gives the, the local jurisdiction the power to, to manage land use. This is a federal program that is enforced at the local level. I have zero enforcement authority under state law. So I'm here to provide technical assistance and guidance to communities and act as the conduit between the FEMA Regional Office and the communities. That's it. The, the authority lies with the local jurisdiction, and it's your agreement with FEMA and the federal government to enforce that ordinance, and then they can take other actions if the community decides not to enforce those. So anything that you might consider that may exceed the NFIP minimum requirements, do not adopt anything that you're not willing to enforce locally.
Because if you don't enforce it, you lose it.
That's correct. They, you, you could, they'll, they would go through that enforcement process, starting with probation, which would assess a fifty dollar surcharge to all flood insurance policies under the NFIP in the community, and then suspension would get you back to the sanctions section where those benefits would no longer be available.
And we're currently in the sanction section.
Correct, because you have not joined the program and have flood hazards identified on a map.
Would it be fair to say that that one percent area is going to be increased when future maps come out?
It's hard to say. It could be, depending on other data that we have about rainfall or the discharges that may adjust. In some cases, we see, like with the French Broad River, some larger streams, sometimes you don't see as much variation in the boundaries. You might see some variation in the flood elevations, but not enough to change the boundaries horizontally. But it's, I can't say never would happen, but it's, you know, it is possible.
And I probably should have asked this earlier, but if we could clarify, we, we went to a great meeting yesterday, saw you there. Lots of great information. People may not be aware, the floodway is defined as an area pretty much routinely floods, right? It's, that's, kind of know where that's at. Kind of.
Right.
And, and most storms, they're bigger than usual, we're going to see some flood there. If we drive down one ninety-one, we know where the floodway is, it's right there, it's French Broad. The floodplain is more of a scientific determination based on elevations. And here I am doing it, and I asked you to define it. So if you don't mind.
Right, so when we look at the, you know, any water course, whether we've mapped it or studied it, you know, a lot of folks probably spend time outside, you walk down by the river, gone out in the woods, you know, you have your streamer water course, and then there's that sort of lower flat area adjacent to that stream. That is sort of the natural floodplain, and you probably can see some debris lines or other things from, you know, recent storms or other events. The floodway was a concept that was developed because the federal government, when Congress enacted the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty-eight, they didn't want to have a full taking or completely prohibit any development in those flood hazard areas, even though that there may have been some rationale to do so. So allow for some development in the floodplain, what they did was say, okay, we'll start encroaching the floodplain and squeezing that area. So we're going to say we can no longer accept the storage or conveyance in this particular area on the fringe side, and as we compress that floodplain, we will create an area that will not increase that water surface elevation more than a foot. So the displacement, the same volume is fitting into a more narrow area, and we don't want to see that displacement more than a foot, and that defines the limits of the floodway or non-encroachment area. And so essentially, if you built out the floodplain completely up to the floodway line, you could theoretically see a flood at the one percent annual chance, a foot higher than what it would have been if you had left that floodplain fully open and, and able to convey those floodwaters. But again, it's also the mo- the closest to the channel, so we also see the, the deepest and highest velocities in that floodway area.
Floodplain is considered the area, or the special flood hazard area, is where there's a one percent chance, or maybe once every hundred years, there will be a storm that will cause it to rise to that level. And that elevation is established, it's on the maps, I looked at them today, and it shows that this is, this is the special, and it's based on where that water, at that elevation is going to go.
That's correct.
It's going to creep up to here. And at that point, that area is considered the floodplain, or the special flood hazard area. So a foot outside that, not a special flood. Even though we may see it flood, it, this is more of a scientific, and I deal with that traffic all the time. We use statistics to keep things consistent.
Right. You know, and this is based on models. The models are typically, we'll use is the U.S. Corps of Engineers Hydraulic Engineering Center's Riverine Analysis System or HEC-RAS model. They do update it periodically, so there are some adjustments. They do take into account user input and other things from other folks, so they are constantly tweaking it now. They've made a lot of adjustments recently over the years. But it is a snapshot in time, based on the topography at the time, the understanding of the discharge or amount of water, volume of water we have in the system, and things like bridges and culverts and other obstructions that impact how that water flows through the system. Over time, things change. We just had a large event, we seen channels migrate because of a storm or something else. You know, those may not be accounted for. So there could be some changes in the future as we do new studies or other things. It's also, water doesn't read the map. So just because the line stops right here on the map doesn't mean the water's going to stop there, so. And it also represents that statistical, as you said, one percent annual chance. Now, that's not to say you might get an event tomorrow that's a hundred and twenty-five year event, or, you know, some variation, you may see some slight differences, so it could come outside that boundary, or it could be slightly less than that, that boundary. So, you know, it's just our best estimate of, of where we think the, the most hazardous areas are going to be, based on the regulations that were set by Congress and FEMA when they, they enacted this.
And so that there is an understanding slowly, there's a difference between a floodway and a floodplain. We have to be careful. We're talking about doing things in the floodway, pretty much no way unless it's difficult. The floodplain, things can be done. And I noticed Hendersonville, we heard about it yesterday, if you build in the floodplain or the special flood hazard area, they require a freeboard. And if I understood that, that means that if you're going to have an occupied, occupied building, and the lowest floor has to be at least two feet above what that statistical base flood elevation for the one percent.
Yes, that's correct. For the city of Hendersonville and several other communities in the state, Town of Fletcher has a three-foot freeboard, and that's what they adopted. But again, it adds a layer of protection, especially to count for some of those unknowns. Going back to the models, all the bridges, culverts and things in the models are assumed to be free of obstruction and allowed to flow as they're designed. As we know from real events, they get clogged up with debris and other stuff, and then sometimes back up, so that's not accounted for in the flood studies, but we do know it can happen. So that's why, one of the reasons why we would encourage that additional freeboard above the base flood to account for some of those unknown that could happen. Also, with recent rule changes with housing and urban development, any structure that is permitted after January first of this year a, would be required to have a two-foot freeboard if it's located in the special flood hazard area, and would, in order to be eligible for FHA mortgage insurance and some of the loan products put out by Housing and Urban Development and the Federal Housing Administration. So that's another, I guess, reason to adopt a freeboard. However, given some of the recent executive orders by the president, the, the basis of that has been eliminated, the executive order that was reinstated by President Biden, that was done under Obama to create the federal flood risk management standard, has been eliminated by the Trump administration. However, because it's already been codified in the Code of Federal Regulations, it would require rule changes, so that, that process could take up to a year, because it has to be published in the Federal Register and the, and the revision to the rules, and it has to go through public comment. Uh, because it has to be published in the Federal Register and the, in the revision to the rules and it has to go through public comment. Uh, so it could take time. Not saying it won't happen, but um it just takes more effort than uh signing an additional executive order.
So the floodplain is there now. And we call it, whether we acknowledge it or not.
Right.
Special flood hazard area is there now, whether we acknowledge it or not as a municipal body. So if we adopt this, certain things are going to be more difficult. To do, things are gonna change. But there are some advantages. And one of the advantages, if I understand, is that the availability of insurance. Which the insurance is subsidized by the government. Now it's private insurance if you need it. And there are people who would need flood insurance now in order to get certain products, loan products. This would allow them to have uh insurance subsidized, so not as expensive.
Potentially. And you know FEMA has made adjustments to their rating uh methodologies. And brought it more in line with actuarial uh rates. So it is something to consider. Um, you know, but it does provide another option or product that's available to the citizens of the town if. You so choose to join the program. Uh, it's also required for other benefits like hazard mitigation grants. Uh, for projects in the special flood hazard area and some of the disaster assistance. That's available for floods if those uh properties or structures are located in the special flood hazard area. Including the town facilities as well. So. Uh, so the public assistance and individual assistance can be tied to that. Also, when folks receive disaster assistance, if they're in that special flood hazard area. When they sign for that agreement or get the SBA loaned, then there, there's a caveat that they will maintain flood insurance. Um, in order to be eligible for future disaster assistance. And that provides them um that opportunity as well. But it does not necessarily impact uh properties outside the special flood hazard area or other types of um. Disasters like a wildfire or something else.
If I may, just for clarification, uh council, if, the um. When you mentioned the insurance, my understanding, and I think it may be helpful as well, is that. Under the current circumstances, private insurers do not have to offer. Yeah, flood insurance to uh, to uh, to community members within the special flood hazard area. Um, and non, and, and uh non uh participating communities. Um, they could, if they, if the private insurer so chose to, but there's not a um. They are not required to, right? There's no expectation of that. However, the um. But by participa- uh participating in the NFIP, there would be a uh, an option for those. Uh, people who live within that area to potentially get flood insurance if they so choose. So it's an uh. So right now, now there may be options still currently, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they would be given an option. Whereas by participating, the community is saying that they are trying, we would be saying that we are trying to mitigate those risks. Therefore, that participation in the NFIP would open up that avenue of potential uh insurance from those uh participants. Now, the other thing I was just wanting to mention, and I may have missed this, I apologize, is around FEMA and individual assistance. By uh, my understanding as well as by participating in the NFIP, it also opens up for hazard mitigation grant funds. That are uh specifically for floods that would not normally be uh, uh, an option. Uh, for us if we're a non-participating community. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we do have uh, community members uh in the town of Mills River do have the option to have. Access to some hazard mitigation funds. Uh, but the ones specifically related to flood mitigation are not uh an option for community members. Yeah, because we do not participate. Is that correct?
Yes, if they're located in that special flood hazard area.
Yes, sir.
Can you give me an example of a hazard mitigation in flood area?
So um, there's different type of structural um uh mitigation, like elevating the building. So if you have, what we consider pre-firm or um pre-regulation type structures. At, that are below the base flood elevation, they could be elevated to meet your ordinance requirements, whether you have a freeboard or not. So elevating to at least the, the base flood elevation. You could also um use the money to have the town acquire the properties and demolish those. And then the community would maintain that as open space in perpetuity. You could use it for parks or other um uh similar uses, but no new structures or any other construction would take place on that. Property without FEMA's uh approval. Again, they've made some uh. Allowances for some park facilities and things like that in the past.
So we could potentially be, by joining, we could potentially gain grant money.
That's correct.
And helping people.
Mitigate their homes, yeah, their properties from.
And you mentioned the, so as far as uses, obviously there's agriculture uses and residential uses. Um, within those standards, we can create, since they're different uses, we could do the minimal. Flood insurance program for the agriculture. And then on the residential uses, we could potentially make it stricter.
You could, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, or different, you know, and different, also non, other non-residential structures. So, you know, any sort of uh commercial or um. Uh, other types of buildings that may not be sort of agricultural related or, you know, minimal impact type structures. Um, you know, or things like um. Restaurants, retail space, uh other commercial uh buildings or industrial type structures where people are working, you know. Uh, like the uh distribution center, for example, it would have to be dry floodproofed. Uh, because people are in there working and um, you know, it would have some, you know, we want to protect what's in the structure as well. Um, so you could make those, you know, anything beyond the minimal, the community, you know, the door is wide open for you. Uh, but again, don't go so far out that you're not willing to enforce it.
Sure.
Uh, so you really have to frame the vision you have for Mills River moving forward and whether this is a good fit for the town or not.
And, and that could be done immediately with Bill three eighty-two sitting there or that, or some of those things would have to wait?
Like I said, if it was separate, you know, I don't know. It, it could be challenged. Um, again, you may want to discuss that with legal counsel. We could have that conversation with school of government as well. Kinda see, um, that does do kind of that curve ball out there, but um. Uh, you know, again, if you're not treating it as zoning, it's just a, another regulation to join that.
I think that if it's outside the land use section in our ordinances, then it's not.
So I also want to uh, just before we get into that, just to um. I guess for, for the good of everybody, the flood hazard areas were established. As part of Henderson County prior to um Mills River incorporation. Uh, so there were flood maps for this area prior to the town incorporating. Now, they have been modified since then, but um, you know, just wanted to, to put, clarify that and put that out. That some of this information was available uh when this was unincorporated areas of Henderson County.
So going, but going on to that, Henderson County participates.
That's correct.
How long have they participated?
Henderson County, uh, I think since the eighties or, or late seventies, early eighties.
So when we incorporated in two thousand four, let's say, then we elected at that point not participate. And they already was participating here?
That's correct, right.
Or did we just not? So we, we purposefully elected not to participate?
My understanding, the way I'm hearing it.
So I don't know what happened back then, to be honest with you. So you know, once the community incorporated, it was assigned its own community identification number by FEMA and was given the opportunity to. Join or not in that, that, you know, I, I wasn't um involved with the program at that time. So I don't know what, what all transpired. But uh, then they became a non-participating sanctioned.
Could I ask you, uh, to weigh in on a situation? So. Over in Fletcher, beside the truck stop.
Okay.
Where they put all the field dirt in.
Mm-hmm.
Was that a permitted, allowed thing or did that dirt just go in there?
It should have been permitted. So whether or not it was or not, I'd have to talk to uh Town of Fletcher about that and find out whether they had permitted it. It should have been. That's another issue. As you add fill material or any type of obstruction, structures, buildings, whatever. You know, it does reduce the conveyance area of that, the floodplain. Uh, so. Elevating the buildings up can be used to elevate those properties outside the flood hazard area. But you're also taking away that storage capacity of that natural floodplain. So you have to weigh the options of whether or not. Uh, that's something else you want to do. So Hendersonville, as they discussed yesterday, of course, that was part of a different part of their regulation, not their flood ordinance. But also um Henderson County have um restrictions on the amount of fill that can be uh placed in the floodplain for certain properties. So, you know, for the lot. So I think Henderson County was uh ten percent uh and then. I believe it's twenty or twenty-five percent in Henderson County.
Bridge on Brickyard Road in my opinion got washed away for that same very reason. When the tiny homes went in, they filled, pulled the hills down, filled that to the creek. When I went up there, I've lived there my whole life. That was a rushing stream through there. That's what washed that bridge out. So I would never create a situation where that could happen here again if I could avoid it. That's just asking for disaster. It's gonna put a hurting on those folk up there for nine, six to nine months.
At the meeting yesterday, they were talking about a home that's built. Where the water has come up and. Moved the home. Um, and they said if it was more than, I believe they said. Fifty or sixty percent of the value of it, that then FEMA would come in and offer to buy the property. And then the property would go to the county that it's in. And the county could opt to either keep the property. It has to remain green from there on. Or they could opt to give it to the municipality in which it lies.
Right. So um, there's a couple of things there with that statement. So the, the acquisition is part of the hazard mitigation. Grant process or program where the community could elect uh with the property owner's interest. I mean, it's, this is all voluntary. They would agree to sell that property to the community for that pre-disaster fair market value. And then the, the community would remove the structure and return it to green space or some other uh applicable use. And maintain that in perpetuity, not allow new development on site. Uh, and it could be dated to the um, you know, if it was annexed by municipality or something like that, they could do that. Or can deed it to like a land conservation or conservancy, but that deed restriction will transfer with the property. It has to stay in place the entire time. Uh, the fifty percent rule is what we call substantial damage or substantial improvement. If you have damage of the existing building that exceeds or equals or exceeds fifty percent of the value of the building. Not the property, the building, um, then it has to be brought into compliance with the current codes um, um, or be removed. Um, same thing with improvements. If you have a home, and again, this is typically a one-year period, but some communities are opting for a five or ten-year. Or larger period to um prevent those phased improvements. But if you're improving the structure more than fifty percent of its current value, again, bringing it into compliance. And these are, you know, sort of current non-conforming buildings that don't look like current flood ordinance of the community. And again, that's to um protect that additional investment that people are making in that structure. And trying to reduce the risk exposure of that building and the loss of, of, you know, the investment that people are putting into it. So the, the real purpose of program is to protect people's lives and their property from flood damages. And that's what we're really focused on and finding ways to make, you know, sort of regulatory requirements to help um, you know, meet those goals.
If, if this town implemented this program, would you foresee more. Residential buildings in the floodplain?
It, it's possible. It depends on what, also what the community is willing to allow or permit as well. So again, as part of that uh ordinance adoption, there are certain uses you want to uh prohibit from being placed in the special flood hazard area. That's an option too. The village of Flat Rock down the road, they also have a pretty stringent requirements. And only allow very few uses in the special flood hazard area. They don't allow any new buildings. Um, other communities across the state don't allow new residential lots to be uh platted in the special flood hazard area. Those are choices that they make. So again, it has to be um those higher standards. Again, you know, whatever flavor that the town of Mills River is looking for. How far uh do you want to go to protect or preserve the, the floodplain areas? Uh, to allow that to do its natural and beneficial functions. Um, and reduce the exposure that you might have on, on development.
So by your example, we could implement a no uh residential plats in the property. And then, but we could allow it to just be used for agriculture and accessory structures.
Yes, that's correct. You know, and some communities are also now looking at density, which again, kind of, you know, we, we kind of get into that sort of downzoning situation. But um, you know, things like um your fire department or police departments or other critical facilities. Probably don't want to put those there. Maybe your schools, you don't want to put those there. Um, care facilities like nursing homes or other places that, you know, you have vulnerable populations. Either you're gonna have to get somebody out there to rescue them or evacuate those structures in a flood event, or you're gonna have to, you know, don't put them there. Or in some cases, uh, sort of high-density um residential, like apartment buildings and things like that. May not be good uses, you know, and again, it's up to the, the local uh community to decide what you want to do or not do in those areas.
Mr. Melchett, if, if someone come in right now and wanted to build in that floodplain. And they met the three-quarter, thirty thousand square foot lot size requirement and it was in mixed use or whatever. Could they build there?
Yes.
See, when I, when I consult council, I mean, you know, the day uh, or legal council. They said since it can happen now, it's very much gonna be considered downzoned if you say no. It's gonna be that easy for the, for us to be challenged on it. So, and I want y'all to remember one thing is that we put five hundred thousand dollars in preserving agriculture. Farming, open space. And we're taking every bit of our ABC funds and we're, and we've got that going in there as well. You know, as long as I've been on council, we've been for, for protecting this farm. And. I, I just, you know, I'm just not a advocate of, of this. Permitting because uh, in letting it happen. I've gotta, I, me myself has gotta have something to tie it down a lot tighter than what we got now. If, because that's gonna be the cheapest land a developer could get their hands on. It feels like to me. We're already seeing they're not afraid to fill it up and build on it. It's happening just outside of that floodplain, just to make sure. We done it here. This is elevated. This ain't a natural hill. We brought this hill in here and put this on it. It's a good thing we did. But um, in saying that, I just want to make sure that we think this thing approved.
Is there a way that we could see with flood map? I know it'll take a couple of minutes to get to it. To show this area. I looked it up today. It's pretty cool. Yeah, I could see where it came. Um, I looked at the. Hendersonville Airport. Just because we know that it flooded out there. Some pieces rather personally, but um. It's just to see the amount of area we're talking about. I don't know if there's a way to say there's three thousand acres in this. But you know, each of us that's a property owner can like.
They, they can tell you how much it is. It's way more than three thousand eight.
We, yeah, we did a rough estimate at last council and I can't remember the exact amount, but it was, it was over three square miles. And it was, I think, like fifteen percent of our jurisdiction.
We're already getting a lot of pressure to push the rule residential zone. That we can't do because of this bill, even if we wanted to. And I, I just, you know. You know me, I want to preserve enough land here that we can, the ones that live here can hopefully survive by. Our ancestors uh was savvy enough to live off of back today. I hope we never get to that. But if we had to have some sod land or something, gratators on to get the rest of us through the winter. But if we had to have some sod land or something rotators on to get the rest of us through the winter. Or whatever. That's the way I think about it. Cause I'm country through and through and I know I'll make it, but I'm looking after about seven thousand. I wonder if I could. Make it if I don't think ahead for them. And I'm just a straight shooter and everybody knows. If you had to figure out where you was going to raise the next, uh, year's meal because everything from here. Got around us got blowed up for some reason or flooded out. I don't have to, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea to think that way. But if it's okay, you know, I'm, I'm a. I'd like to hear from a few of the farmers who are willing to get up and speak in behalf, uh, of what they see as any. Thing that they would not like about it if we went with it or if there are any suggestion of us going with it. I don't know where you're at with it. So if you give us a minute.
And the, the area that's, the blue area is the special flood hazard area. The hatched area is the floodway. So that's the area that pretty routinely floods. Like in a twenty-five year storm or a five-year storm or whatever.
The blue, not the hatch. The hatch floods regularly.
Right, this way, yeah. Whereas the blue is a one percent. Chance of flooding, which we kind of sort of, everybody calls it the hundred-year flood. Then there's the area outside that, which is a dark, not quite, that's not blue. That is the five hundred year or the point two percent chance.
Yeah. You see a little of it right here.
That corner. Yeah, right there.
Jeff, Bradley, anybody willing to get up and give us the, or, or anybody here to speak in behalf of the ag committee or anything? I don't know what y'all got cooking.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, one, thank you for the opportunity to address this body and two, uh, thank you for having this discussion. Uh, standing before you tonight as somebody who farms in Mills River, whose family farm includes a little over a hundred acres in the Mills River floodplain. But a lot of my comments are actually going to refer back, uh, some of you may know that, uh, spent more than three decades as an engineer and serving agriculture exclusively in West North Carolina. Uh, this floodplain, uh, or flood damage prevention ordinance is something I'm very familiar with, helping farmers. And I say that because we've talked a lot, or not, we, you've talked a lot about structures tonight. Uh, the operative word we need to be talking about is developments. That's a FEMA word. That's, uh, and their ordinance or. You have to regulate all developments in the floodplain. If you read the definitions, the, the definition of developments, any man may change to floodplain. So if you take it literally, a mailbox in that light blue area that requires a permit and that's regulated. But I have not come across a floodplain administrator that reads it, uh, quite so extreme. But what does come into play with agriculture is, uh, a lot of the work we do is developments. And it's not just the cultivation and harvesting of crops. It has to do with drainage, has to do with field improvements, has to do with bank maintenance, bank repairs, all those things. The real rub comes not just from having to come down hall and get a floodplain permit to do some of these things. The problem comes when it's in the floodway. You know, I've already covered, covered this quite extensively. Uh, when you get into that non-encroachment area, the floodway, which for an example, the field we have behind the Engle supermarket, it's about half the area is in floodway. We do these things in a floodway, like I talked about drainage, a culvert across the ditch, anything like that. It requires a no-rise certification, which that's a certification done by a licensed engineer in North Carolina. But when you hand in that certificate, they can't accept that on its own. It has to have the flood study with it. And Mr. Garrett referred to Heck Raz, which is, you know, you get into weeds about it, but basically you have to use their model, their data. Then put in your data, show the differences and prove that there's a no-rise. So we're talking about anything that happens within that floodway, agriculture-related. That I want to stress, and we're not talking about buildings. We're talking about simple things, uh, you know, a watering tank. I have done a no-rise certification up in northern mountains for a watering tank, livestock water tank. And again, that puts a burden on the farmer to have to go out and find an engineer. And find somebody capable of doing these studies, develop the study and do the certification. So it's sort of a, a big tax imposed on farmers that farm the floodplains. And, uh, there is no exemption that you can do as a community and still be good with NFIP. If you start exempting anything in the floodway, doesn't matter who's doing it and why they're doing it. But if you exempt it. And don't regulate it, then you put your program in jeopardy and they'll pull your, uh, ability to acquire insurance. I did, uh, mention, I guess at my outset that the, um. Uh, I went to the ag advisory committee last week and, uh, I saw, uh, some slides that Mr. Malcheck presented. And I think if I understand right, there was thirteen property owners that could be affected if this town were to take action. Within that six-month deadline where they'd be available some grant monies. They could go back and retroactively get insurance, some of those things. But I question, um. That thirteen property owners that bought and built knowing they're in a floodplain. I mean, they're still going to be in it. What you do by adopting the floodplain ordinance and participating is basically you're creating a moral hazard in my opinion. Because right now, or if you read the, the state's model ordinance, it, uh. A lot of it is devoted to specifications for new construction, specifications for revamping existing structures. And basically it's a road book of how to build more safely in that. And by. Participating, then they can get insurance, then they can get mortgages. Right now we have a de facto, as I would consider it, floodplain ordinance. If you want to build a floodplain, build harms way. You have to self-insure. You have to underwrite it your whole self, because there's no way you'll get insurance and there's no way you'll get a mortgage from any lending institution. So yes, it will happen. It can happen. But if you consider how long the community of Mills River has been here. And we're only talking about there's thirteen households in harms way. Does that really justify the move to go? And it was purely intentional in this town incorporated to not participate. Because we do have almost two thousand acres of floodplain. It goes right through the heart of this town. And it's some of the most highly productive cropland in this county, in this part of the state. And so I think we should be different on purpose. So I've been imploring you to, uh, to consider this because. I mean, even things like we have silage that we feed our cattle. We put it in a pile, cover it plastic and tires. But it's in the floodway. That's where our shop is. Our shop's in floodway. But that is, goes beyond a temporary storage more than the ninety days. I mean, that's a permitted activity. And I'd have to hope that your floodplain administrator would be willing to put your program in jeopardy to let me slide on doing that. But choose a town can officially do it. Because to do that would put the whole program in jeopardy. So. Uh, I guess that would be a little bit of counter-programming on some of the things we've heard tonight, but like I said, I've spent. A long time helping farmers and, uh, I guess the last thing and I'll sign off. Uh. So here I am. We've had damage from Helene on our property, especially behind the Engle supermarket. And we've been diligently working since the storm to repair it. Well, I was on a farm in Pennsylvania County in Roseland last week. Because that farmer asked me, had to hire me because he can't start any bank repairs until he gets an engineer due to no-rise certification, because he has to work in a floodway. My hope with him is that we can make a case for the administrator that we're just putting back the pre-flood condition. I'll have to do the full-blown study and hire surveyors. Because the study for what he might need will be like twenty, thirty thousand dollars. And that's some, I guess I failed to mention that these flood studies don't come cheap. If it's small stream, small price, small price being maybe two, three thousand dollars. But if it's Mills River, the French Broad. You're talking ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars for these kinds of studies. I mean, involve all this survey.
Mr. Young, if, if that twenty thousand dollars is spent, there's no guarantee. You're going to be able to do what you wanted to, if I understand. Is that correct?
If it results in no rise, then you'll be able to go full steam ahead, but you don't know that.
Till you spend the twenty or thirty thousand.
Another anecdote, after Francis and Ivan came through, I was helping a newfound farmer. Now this is in my state capacity. And, uh, we're putting a stream back where it used to be and, uh, got all the permits, but Buckingham County participates. So we did that. And we modeled it, showed a two-tenths of a rise. We're talking two and a half inches. And that was locally. It put a one, one-tenth rise on some neighboring properties. Neighbors all signed off notary saying that was fine, but we had to apply for the conditional letter of map provision to plumber. There's a fifty-five hundred dollar permit fee, not to mention the engineering and the surveying. And then when you get your letter of map provision, that's another fifty-five hundred dollars. And that's back twenty years ago. I know it's still saying, but that's eleven thousand dollars in. It's eleven thousand dollars in fees that we did. That was the last one I ever did for that reason, because it makes everything we do financially unreasonable. When you work on a farm scale. So yes, when you spend that money, you're hoping the engineers will determine what modifications you're trying to do will result in a rise. And if they do, just the permit fees run in the tens of thousands of dollars. Not to mention all the engineering that goes into it. So, uh, this is something that for a town that has walked the walk and talked the talk. About preserving farmland, but this goes counter to all that. Because like I said, you're basically some of your prime farmland, you're going to basically, um. Shackles them where they can't maintain their land. For some reason, yes, I can dip out my ditches for drainage. As long as they don't change the channel dimensions. But what do we do with it? We turn a hundred and eighty degrees and we put it in a field. When it dries, we spread it out. You won't do it without no rise if you're in the floodway. You can do it on a flood fringe and still get a permit, but you have to do the study when you just maintain your drainage ditches. Army Corps lets us do without a permit. Even they recognize the importance of maintaining drainage ditches for agriculture purposes, but FEMA, no.
Any questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
Jenny, you want to come up?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just quickly, um, if during the public comm, if this is considered a public comment section, that, that's the buzzer that you heard for the three minutes. However, if council wishes to waive that three-minute element, uh, you, you may. I just wanted to provide that.
Me personally, I feel like this is such an important issue that I just want to hear every possible detail I can hear about this, good, bad, or ugly. That's what I want to.
I have a question. Yeah. Um, is there any way that we could use our land preservation funds to help take the hardship off of some of the farmers that have to have these studies? Could we allocate some of that to help them if we go forward?
The way it's drawn, I don't think we could. It would take, uh, legal counsel to advise us on that.
We, we would have to rewrite the, the program because again, it's meant to fill the funding gap, uh, while landowners, uh, pursue conservation easement funding with the state or feds.
There's nothing that says that we can't create a fund.
That was, that was going to be my next question. If we could support them in a way that will not be a hardship. So that all parties could, you know, bring everything up to scratch and not, not break the bank. So that was my, that was my question. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all letting me talk today. Most of you know me. Uh, just before we start. To keep anybody from thinking I've got ulterior motives, I lost my house to the flood. So, and I'm also a farmer. You mentioned earlier, and let me back up a minute. I was watching the gentleman that spoke first. Listening to Jeff speak and everything Jeff said, he was back there shaking his head. So I don't think there's any discrepancy in what Jeff told y'all. You said, uh, we didn't adopt this when we took over from the county. I remember we did. And I think you were on the first town council, weren't you? You weren't.
Jenny, Jenny Hernandez.
Okay, that's right. Well, the reason they didn't adopt it was for the reasons we're here. A lot of us are against it today. I was asked to be on a committee to, uh, look at preserving agriculture here in the last four, five months, you know. With one of the ex-town council, Randy. And y'all got five hundred thousand dollars set aside to figure out some way to help. Keep green space and preserve agriculture. Well, if you do this. You just will take that five hundred thousand dollars out of that allotment and go ahead and spend it somewhere else because you take all the floodplain. And they're going to fill twenty percent of it. You've already said, the lawyer said, we can't change that now because it's already in there. We'll get sued. Is that?
Unless Bill three eighty-two is rescinded, yes.
It's a gray area.
That's a gray area.
Okay, well, gray will cost you money. I learned a lot of experience. Yeah, gray costs you money. But so if we're going to take up part of the floodplain to build houses so these people can buy insurance. And that's the only reason we're here talking about this today is people can build houses and buy insurance through FEMA. Well, they're going, if they're not going to build in our floodplain, they don't need flood insurance. I mean, Jeff don't need flood insurance. His house on the side of the mountain. I didn't think I needed flood insurance, but turns out I did. But, you know. Uh, my house is built in the forties and it's never been wet. So, but it got wet. So. Uh, and if I had flood insurance, I wouldn't buy it today because I'm betting I'll die before it floods again. But if we're going to preserve, if our number one goal, and it's in your first part of your documentations is to preserve and enhance agriculture. Then this is absolutely the wrong plan to look at. That's my opinion.
Any questions for Bradley while he's with? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else while we're into this?
I have a question for you, Stiller.
We'll have to get you to come up here.
I'm a farm boy myself, Jerry Merrill. I'm just across the line from your jurisdiction. You had, uh, said, and you mentioned in the town of Fletcher where we fill this volume of dirt. So you investigate that and you find there was no permit. You issue a fine. Who gets that fine? The town of Fletcher? The landowner? The dirt mover? Or the contractors? And for is a fine, what would it be?
First of all, our office is not regulatory, so we don't issue fines. We don't issue permits. That goes back to the local. So I would go to the town of Fletcher, ask for the permit documentation. If they don't have it. Then they have to correct the violation. So they would go to the property owner first and issue the notice of violation. And then they would talk, you know, have that discussion about. How this occurred, why it occurred, and then try to figure out how to correct that particular issue, whether it's removing the fill material. Or having it permitted at, uh, retroactively. Uh, so again, it would be the community to handle that because it's enforced at the local level.
And they would have to go through those, uh, rise studies and all to figure out what they're going to have to do to rectify it or correct it.
If it encroaches into the floodway, or they could say you can remove the portion that's in the floodway and restore it back to its previous condition. And then the rest of it, they could permit, uh, again, retroactively if they chose to, or they could say remove all of it because it wasn't done correctly to begin with. So again, it's up to the community and how it enforces those corrective action procedures. But the expectation is that it gets corrected, uh, and, and comes into compliance with the ordinance. So, and again, all this other, uh, folks that have spoken, all valid points. And again, that's why it was this important decision for the community. And you have to make the best choice for the town. So.
You being a professional in this field, uh. You live in a community that has this program.
Yes, I do. City rally.
Do, uh, would you recommend it for a community?
I think it really depends on the community and, and, and again, it's, it's that local decision. They have to make that decision that works best for them.
Okay. Anyone else got questions for us? Wants to speak? Questions for him while we've got time?
Want to hear a comment?
I'd love to hear a comment.
Appreciate it.
Brian Ross, uh, sixteen school house road, Doc and Lou Moore's old house. You guys know I've been in real estate for over twenty years. I want as much green space as we can have on a personal level, but I'm telling you, on a professional level, when you get affordable insurance, you see development. Look at, look at Edowop right here around the corner from us. They're not incorporated, so they fall under the county rules. But their development in the flood is, is already there. So you were losing, we've lost farmlands over there. Um, even, you know, close to town, if you will. What happens is in areas like this where we live in right now, you only have private options. Their prices aren't regulated with a ceiling. They go as high as they want. So they charge more. And to Bradley's point, we lose Bradley? Lost Bradley. Um, we, we don't have developers knocking, knocking us down to get to that right now. I think there's separate issues here. The rural residential that we mentioned, the, the land preservation commit, or, uh, funds that we mentioned.
the land preservation committee or funds that we mentioned, and then protecting the farmers. And they're just, each one's kind of doing a little bit of this, but they're, one thing I promise you, if a developer sees the opportunity to get land and the math works, it's all he cares about is that math. We're going to lose Bradley. Don't let Bradley know I said this. He's right. We, we're going to lose some of that space because they'll come fill it and develop. That's just my experience of 21 years of selling dirt and houses.
I've got a question if I can ask. Malachek, if you want to weigh in. So if we were to adopt this, we got to enforce it. And that's it. Because we don't enforce it, we potentially lose it. Which then we're back, we wasted all the time and money to adopt it and not keep it. So.
See, if Hendersonville.
Creates a whole nother problem.
Has two staff members that do this full time. What would we be able to do with our current staff?
Yes, this is a great question. And thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. I would, I would, and in fact, it's a well timed discussion because Mr. Malachek and I have had this discussion and I'll let him weigh in on, on the specifics here. But in general, there would be an increased burden and increased workforce capacity pressures on our planning and zoning staff. And although depending on what that look, you know, this is unknown, obviously for us because we're not a non-participatory community. So I can't, there's no projection that I can have right now that says what we could look like. It depends on how many permits are going to be coming in and those requirements. So could I, could I foresee based off of the requirements that there would need to be increased potential workforce or workforce capacity in order to handle it? Potentially based off of, again, the, the need to the, the community members who would be applying for those permits.
I agree. It, it really depends upon the permit load, which we can't project what that would be. And that all depends upon the ordinance specification. So if the ordinance is written to allow more types of development, there may be more types of permits, which would be more burden on staff. If we write it that, you know, maybe there's no development except for ag, very limited fill, there may be fewer permits, but now we're also permitting agricultural activities we've never done before. And I don't know what that would look like in terms of the permit volume. I can say now, just from a zoning permit standpoint, it's very rare we do see a permit for a home, a business or something in a flood plain. Usually if we see it overlap, we just let the applicant know. But again, because there's no ordinance standard, nothing else is applied.
The one addendum I would add to that comment, and Mr. Malachek, correct me if I'm wrong here, is if there's a concern that by enacting this, that then on day one or, you know, day 20, that all of a sudden there's going to be an inundation within the town of Mills River. We don't foresee that happening. That there would be, you know, the potential to react to it. But, you know, what it would look like in three months, six months, based off of the ebb and flow that's permitting. And again, as Mr. Malachek said, depending on the, the way the ordinance is written and drafted, there would, I can imagine, there will, no matter what, be an increase in the need because that would be an increase in permits regardless of the, of the way it's written.
Correct. And again, it's another regulatory program. I mean, to use watershed as an example, when we took over water supply watershed from the county in 21, and I think formalized it at the end of 22. That's something, although the ordinance is in place, we're doing all the permitting, the enforcement provision of that, the regular inspection of stormwater control measures across the town, that's still something we're building out. So, so again, luckily with the Smart of Online Permitting System where everything flows through there, we will have the data to be able to track that. So if that ever did become a need, that would be something we'd be able to demonstrate to council if additional resources were required.
If I could ask you, how often does municipalities or counties lose their program because they couldn't comply to their own ordinance, let's say? Does it happen very often?
Doesn't happen very often. It does take some time for us to coordinate with the community in FEMA. You know, we do give the jurisdictions time to correct those issues or violations. We also look at, is there sort of a one-off or sort of a, an acute type situation? Or is it more of a chronic problem the community has or, you know, and, and we do have a couple that we're working on with FEMA now that, you know, could potentially be put into a bad predicament. FEMA also took action against some communities in Florida, you know, in the last year or so. And, you know, that's kind of still kind of ongoing with those communities. But what they've told us is that they're going to start ramping up that sort of enforcement piece, but I'm not sure if they really have the staff to really address it. Again, I'd rather have a community not join or you know, enforce what they're willing to enforce rather than having these problems and get into a problem, issues later on. So again, it's a big decision for the community and, you know, just appreciate y'all considering it. But again, it's, you have to make that best decision for, for the town and what's working best for you.
Yesterday at Hendersonville, they talked about it and they talked about staff members. Still has a lot of development in the flood plain. Because they've been developing a lot longer than anybody knew anything about the flood plain. I'm not sure that we've got a lot of development.
Farmers might sell if they're no longer exempt and we'll get it. That's the concern. That's the question I'm not.
That was why Harrisonville city done it because it was free willy. You just have to build it wherever. The problem we're going to have is we get this, it's going to be, it's going to be here because we can't let our citizens building this floodway or flood plain and then let them get this insurance, get this mortgage and then us mess it up and have to fall out or we can't say we're not doing this anymore. Because then all of a sudden we put an undue burden on that resident because now they can't get the regulatory insurance and they having to go out and reach out and get this higher rated insurance. We just, it's either all or none on this.
So if we do it, this is the, this is a long-term commitment, whatever it takes to keep it.
As it should be with any ordinance. That way pass.
Well, we got, yeah, but we got the ability to change those ordinance as we see. This year we'll have some restrictions on it.
Correct. Yeah. But if we pass an ordinance, any ordinance, we should be enforcing it.
Oh, absolutely. Of course. Yes. So I feel we do.
My name's Linda Britton. I live on Old Turnpike Road. I'm neither pro nor con at this point. I'm just confused and I, I needed some clarification. When you look at the map, the blue hash marks, is that where most of the current farmland is that you're talking about, Jeff? The other blue too? Okay. Where are the residents that live in this area? How many? I mean, people live in, in the blue part, maybe not so much where it's the blue hash mark? Because, because I'm just wondering how many people are already living in that, all right, in that blue area? Because is this, is this going to impact? Do, do we have a lot of people living in this area that need this insurance now? I'm not talking about development.
And I think, one thing too, you remember flood insurance, it doesn't just apply to the river. So if we, if somebody develops something, a big development and there's runoff from it and it goes into my basement, insurance won't cover it unless you have flood insurance. So flood insurance does not just apply to the flood. So I think that's important for everybody to remember.
Okay, that's good information. Because that was what I was wondering. I mean, if we've got, we, we're, the comment has come around several times about if you pass this, then developers will come in and build in the flood plain. And I'm thinking we've already got people living in that area that need that, that insurance. And I think personally that it would be an excellent use to reallocate or redefine the use of that farmland preservation fund. So that if you had farmers that need to file these paperwork permits and stuff that are so exorbitant, that the town, you would still be preserving agriculture because you're helping them keep doing what they're doing already and lifting their financial burden. So that in the long run, you are still preserving agriculture in your community while you're helping the people that are already in the flood prone areas, which is part of your responsibility to protect your citizens there. Can you deny the ability to build new inhabited structures in flood plain?
We could, but it's my understanding with this recent state.
Because of that.
Feel that we can't control it right now. May never be able to control it ever again. We may have what we got moving forward from now on.
Yeah.
But until it's rescinded or changed in some manner, we've got what we got.
And at this point in time, can people build a residence?
Yes.
If they're willing to take the risk.
If you'll turn around and look, it's going to really surprise you how few they are. I see just a few right here in Mills River Village right here. If you see it, right there where he's got his cursor, see right there?
Right, right.
There's just a few right there, but it don't get to the houses hardly.
We're going to build there. Go forward, let him.
So at this point in time, it looks like on the map that there's not a lot of dwellings in a flood. In the flood plain from the river, but like Brian mentioned, we're talking about runoff from places too.
Yeah.
That could be a problem.
We don't have data on the number of homes or occupied dwellings in the flood plain. We did get information from FEMA that there's, and I'm probably off a few, 85, 80 to 90 structures in the special flood hazard area in the town. But that, but that doesn't mean it's occupied.
Gotcha. So.
There will probably never be homes in the floodway.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's, that's right.
Way, I was told, think no way.
Yeah.
Like it's the flood plain, which means you've got a 1% chance. Can you give it? What's a 1% chance? If you, if it happens to flood you out, it's 100% for that one year. But that doesn't mean you've got another 99 years before it happens again.
And if.
If we have a disaster and the North Carolina governor declares it a state of disaster, is there not state funds that come to help for the disaster, the area?
So generally speaking, yes, ma'am. So there, there are certain funds, again, it depends on the disaster and it depends on the situation. But yes, that would be potentially state funds as well that could be applied based off of whatever that disaster declaration would entail. I would, if I may, I just provide a little clarity as well. And we meant, we didn't mention this at the beginning because we put in the last presentation. But the, the, the reason why the conversation is currently happening is based off of the six-month window after a storm. So speaking of declarations, federal presidential declaration, once that happens, you're essentially, and I'm going to look at Mr. Garrett in the back to make sure I don't say anything else wrong about this, is that you have a six-month window for non, for non-participatory communities in order to have that conversation and potentially join. And if they joined, then those who would have been affected by that, by that storm or that event would then be retroactively able to be participating in the program. So to Mr. Malachek's point, well, I would just say it this way, the, to the current point, yes, there are, I think it's relatively right. I think the last time we saw was approximately 80 or 90 that would potentially be in this special flood hazard area. There is also concern that council, that was a well, well taken about the current understanding of session law 2024-57 and the ability to further regulate within those areas. But it does not also mean that a decision must be made in accordance right now, or else we've lost that opportunity to revisit this at a future time. There's a, this opportunity to talk about the NFIP and the potential fit or fit for the community can happen at any time moving forward based off of the circumstances at that time. So the reason why it's happening currently is it's, it's under a good, you know, good governance practice to say you have a six-month window and we, and, and have an opportunity to have this discussion.
I actually be wrong, but I believe NFIP goes into the five. Correct me on that. That's not 500 years on this matter.
Thank you.
Linda, I hope it does.
Mr. Garrett, NFIP go into the 500-year flood?
Not the, not the minimum requirement?
No.
Yeah. So no, that not for the minimum requirements. However, under federally funded projects for critical actions, they call them critical actions. They would have to be protected to the 500-year elevations. So that, that's something that expanded for things that FEMA would pay for in the future. And again, things like fire departments, hospitals, things like that, that they consider as, or as defined as critical actions. But for the regular regulatory purposes, unless the community adopts that higher standard, then it's, it's not regulated either. So.
You can answer this, but there are no insurance required in the five.
No, there is no, there's, there's no mandatory purchase requirement. So again, if the structure's in the special flood hazard area, which is that blue shaded area or in the floodway, which hopefully they're not there, but you know, that would be part of the, the overall special flood hazard area. And it's a federally backed loan or mortgage. Under federal law, the lender is required to make sure that that structure is insured or has flood insurance for the life of the loan. If it's outside of that, the 0.2% annual chance or 500-year flood plain, it's not a requirement. And if it's in the areas outside of that, we call the unshaded X zones, there's no, no requirements either. But in the participating community, flood insurance is available, as Mr. Kimball said, community-wide. So it provides that opportunity. But again, it's in what, what, what does the community want to do? What's best fit for the community?
You can buy flood insurance now. Even officially outside of the flood plain. It's halfway reasonable.
I asked my insurer today and he said they would not sell flood insurance.
Okay. And all of them will not, but I do have it at my place. All of them will not, but you can purchase. Come on up, please.
I'm Katrina Killian. Hey, Mike Corin. Anyway, yes, I got flood insurance for, it's not in Mills River. That's one of my rental houses. It's in Henderson County. It did get flooded. And Steve Garen at Mills River Foreign Bureau is my agent. And so, yes, I purchased, I'm getting my house repaired. I got flood insurance. So it does happen. It's a law that they have to provide it. So.
You can, it's not, it's not, I don't think it's a law that they had to provide it, but there is a private option out there in Mills River to get it. Henderson, if you're in Henderson County, then yes, it is a, would be a law because they participate, that you do, that you do have the option to buy it. So yes, you're right.
Yes.
Yes, when you.
And it was through Southern Blood or something.
Okay. Yes, exactly. That's probably one of the 50 participating groups.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was through Farm Bureau.
You have to, you have to go outside the box. Yeah. Come on.
Michael, I don't want to prolong the meeting, but when I think of all the things that have been said tonight, it seems pretty clear to me that if you adopt this, it's going to increase the cost for farmers. Absolutely. But it would also make more land available and more appealing, as Brian said, to developers, which those two things together seem to be the opposite of what we're trying to accomplish. So I would recommend that we don't adopt.
Is Mills River designated a trout stream? Is it not against the law to drive through a trout stream? Fill up a trout stream? Push dirt around a trout stream?
You got buffers for sure.
Is that not 40 or 50 foot from the middle of the stream?
Probably more in places. Some versions, it's 100.
My question is, I agree. I'm a farm boy. I'm in the construction business. I came out of Transylvania County where we talked about building dams years ago to protect. protect you guys. I know they were going to take our farm. And the more you put out there, the more they're going to build. Farmland's cheap. And housing sells for more expenses. So I suggest how we're going to fill this land? It's a trout stream. The government's been on my hany more times than once because I drill water wells. Sometimes we have to pour these streams to get to another parcel of land. Not anymore. Build me a bridge. So I say to you guys.
And build them bridges in certain part of the year, too.
This is true. Right now, you're closing a road for eight months. What's that going to do for the devastation? But think about that, how you going to fill something that's already against the law to fill?
It might fall in that ten to twenty percent on some of these big places, and that's still ten to twenty percent still if we don't regulate it in a way that, it just scares me as a mayor.
Yes. Two or three thousand.
You know, what we, what we, they talked about yesterday is that we could say no fill, period. But the problem with that is if the DOT needs to come in and put in a new culvert, then they can't raise the road at all. So they advised that you have some fill available. And I believe Hendersonville has a ten percent that they would allow in the floodplain. So if you have an acre parcel, forty-three thousand square feet roughly, you could build, you could, you could fill four thousand three hundred sixty, you know, you could, ten percent of that you could raise up so you could build a house on it. But, and, and you talk about, I, I think it would be nice to take the money and help the farmers to pay the fees, but unfortunately, there's really no way to predict what the fees are from routine farming operations. Things that you have to do, because when you spend thirty thousand dollars to find out, when you do the study to find out you can't do what you wanted to do, you've lost the thirty thousand dollars. But you can't do what you want to do without the study. So it's, it's an expensive prospect, I mean. So that's one of the things that concerns me is the amount of money that has to be spent for routine operations. And I'm wondering how, so it's done in Transylvania County, you just got to do it. Now that's.
We have.
People that farm in Transylvania County.
Build dykes, push up the land to the river.
You can't do.
Let's look at something a little closer, you're talking about filling. You're on Hooper Lane, right? Why is Hooper Lane not paved all the way through? Because the Johnson boys wouldn't sign off because they wanted to raise the road, and if they raised the road, they would have built a dyke, and that would have pushed water back up on your facilities. That's case in point. Be careful what you ask for, because in the end, it may cost us all.
If I may, just to, just to, you know, look at Mr. Malacheck here, just because there's been conversations about fill and, and understanding what the current fill options are within the town of Mills River, I think it's helpful because we've been talking about ten percent or twenty percent. So Mr. Malacheck, can you provide us with what the, are there any current stipulations around fill in, in the town and?
No.
Okay.
No, and there, there is a parcel this past year that had fill put on it in the floodplain, in the floodway, that we could do nothing about. Now with, now with, with an ordinance, you can restrict fill as much or as little as you want, just as with a floodplain ordinance, you can restrict or not limit development as much or as little as you want as well.
Got a couple comments.
Go ahead.
So just, I want to clarify this, there's been a lot of talk, so, and I just want to say this. I want, just to get this off the table. Raise your hand in this room if you're against agriculture.
You're what?
Against agriculture. Okay, so nobody raised their hand, all right? So let's just go and clarify that this is not an anti-ag thing, all right? I want to get that off the table before I go get my haircut and somebody's like, anyways. Yeah, exactly. Development is still happening in the floodplain. It's still happening, all right? We can't regulate it, we have no choice. The cost of, Mills River is in a unique situation, the cost of land and the places to build in Mills River are dwindling. People still want to live here. A developer who comes in from outside has deep, deep pockets, as we've seen with the townhomes that just got built. They don't need flood insurance, they're just going to pay cash because they can get the funding for it. So they're going to fill the floodplain and they're going to build the houses because we don't regulate it. So there's nothing that stops me from going adjacent to your farmland, raising my side of the river fifteen feet, pushing the water on your crops, killing your agricultural production, correct? Okay, so unless we do something, they can do that anyways. So that's destroying agriculture. Only reason why it hasn't been destroyed to this point is because developers haven't had the opportunity to get here yet. But they're coming, we see that. You're getting another grocery store. Publix, when they're putting in a grocery store, don't just randomly throw grocery stores in places. They look to where potential development is coming, they have experts who got this, they know that Mills River is going to boom. So unless we get ahead of it, there won't be any agriculture left in Mills River, period. My other thing is, we know that we can dictate the guidelines of the NFIP or what we want in our ordinances. So we can say, based upon the uses of residential, that the, we don't allow fill, we can make it much, much tighter than we do on agriculture. Therefore, that limits the residential uses, that limits development, and it preserves the land for agriculture. We don't have that tool right now. So for me, not joining, and I can say this, is not an option. The devil is in the details. There is a middle ground where we can all work together and everybody can win. Farmers in Henderson County, Transylvania County, Buncombe, Rutherford, all these areas around this, they're already in this program and they're still farming. So when everybody gets up and says, oh, this is going to kill farming, kill farming, it hasn't in those areas. So what are they doing different? Why is it all of a sudden that it's going to destroy Mills River if we join this? That's what I don't understand. What's different about Mills River from agriculture standpoint that you can't survive, where in everywhere else in Henderson County, in areas that do way more farming than we do at Newville, why are they able to do it? Why is it working for them? That's just things that we have to consider, but at the end of the day, I'm not willing to risk the life, safety, welfare of a community or the residents who live in it. That's just not an option. It's a public safety issue. So I'm for it, but there is a middle ground. I'm willing to work with agriculture, I'm willing to sit down at the agriculture committee, there's a middle ground where everybody can win. It's going to take compromise, but everybody can win. It doesn't have to be one way or the other. That's my speech.
Well, turn it around, I feel like that me and previous councils have provided that safeguard by not having the insurance so they can free-willy build in these places, you know?
That's not working anymore, it's not going to work anymore.
Well, but the problem is, is we can't change it either way until our legislators let us change it.
I think the, if it's outside of the land usage, what we're being told, if it's outside of the land usage, then it's not zoning. And it's a federal program, how's the state going to tell a federal program what to do?
I don't know.
I think something that Mr. Merrill brought to the table was about the trout stream boundaries, and that could be looked into by zoning.
It's, it's, unlike Mr. Malacheck laying on that, he'll have the detail on that maybe.
We have nothing to do with that.
No, that's state.
That's federal, isn't it?
Yeah, it, I think it'd be through DEQ and water quality specifically. Now, if I saw an issue where someone's dumping fill into the Mills River, I would pass that complaint up to them, but they would be the enforcing agency.
Yeah.
Well, if they're backfilling on one side, are they allowed, is Mr. Merrill still here?
Yeah.
If they backfill on one side of a trout stream, is that, do they have zones against that? Zoning against that?
I think so, because there is laws, I think in this county that say you aren't supposed to cut, dig, grow plants within forty feet of the industry.
Right.
Where you get your water.
We don't have those rules in the town, though. We have, we have a zoning buffer where you can't put a structure within thirty feet, but there's no vegetation management or.
But that's controlled by DEQ with the.
Only for those specifically designated streams. Yeah, so Boylston Creek is not one, and that would not apply to that.
You sure?
We fought, we fought to keep.
Yeah, the town fought it off.
We fought to keep it out.
Oh, well, Mills River is.
Yeah, the river, yeah.
So it would work in a little, in a few places, but with even the minimum that they allow to fill with some of these big massive parcels, they would still be able to fill quite a bit and never even get close to the river. Because once you get that close, you're already in the stay out, the hatch part, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Come on, yeah, it's kind of.
So what I'm hearing from all this is that the town cannot protect the floodplains at this point. Is that correct?
Can you state your name?
I'm Irving Gibbs, so I live over, pretty close to Bradley, I had some flooding as well. But I'm hearing you say that the town has no way to protect the farmers in the floodplain right now, and because of developers, it's going to go away because everyone's going to buy it with their money. And that the only way to protect it is by letting, following the ordinances of the National Flood Protection. Is that fair to say? I, I, it's a question.
I mean, yeah, I would say that we can control it more.
We can't control it now, that's a correct statement.
Okay, so that's, okay.
And if we went into the flood insurance program, we can control, we can control growth, so we can do the minimal standards for agriculture, and we can do strict standards for whether or not we're going to allow anything outside of those uses.
Anything outside of agriculture?
Correct.
Okay. But you also have to follow the, the studies and all that, which definitely says the floodplain.
Correct, which every agriculture outside of Mills River is doing that already.
I, I see the point, I also see the other side of the point, you know? It's not good, but I'd hate to see all the floodplain gone. I don't like seeing these structures being built over here, you know, not really. Town is really changing a lot since I've moved here. Anyways, that's all I have to say.
And I think, I agree with you, and I think that's my point, is that those structures got built because we can't regulate it. If we would have had regulations in place, we could have stopped it.
So maybe you'll have more building in places that aren't in the floodplain because people can buy less expensive insurance for some of the other conditions I think that were already mentioned, like water coming, not in the floodplain, but from other sorts of floods. I can't even get flood insurance in my house if my, what do you call it, if my faucet breaks and.
Correct.
Yeah, so, you know, it's kind of nerve wracking sometimes. I don't have a recommendation.
Was hoping for an answer.
Come back up.
I don't know if this is a state or local thing, because I know in other communities, like in Florida and other places, that the developers have to pay an impact fee. Can that be something that's a local, Kim Mills River charged developers impact fees?
If you can call the state legislator and let them allow it, they've got a bill on us now where we can't tighten up any restrictions.
Okay, so it's on a state level?
Yeah, state level right now. All one hundred counties fell under the same criteria that no downzoning, which means you pretty much got what you got when it comes to zoning, and that would be considered a zoning implication, so by attaching a fee to it, so make it more strict.
I think that would curtail a lot of the development.
Yeah.
So.
All right, thanks. So we'll need to wrap this up because we've still got some agenda to go here, so.
Just a question.
Okay, come on up.
Mr. Malacheck, I think you mentioned that there's no, nothing to prevent people from filling in the floodplains at this point, is that correct, in Mills River?
Correct, and the floodway.
And the floodway. How can you change that? Can you make an ordinance? Is an ordinance considered zoning?
Whenever the state legislator allows me to make any changes.
But an ordinance, I know you can't do anything with what's called downzoning, which I totally don't understand, but I didn't know if this fill part falls under that downzone.
I can't make it any more restrictive than it is right now.
And by saying no fill, that's making it restrictive?
Yeah.
So if there's something out there that once we pass the text amendment, now they're out of conformance.
Okay.
A potential recommendation for council to consider is that, we've talked a little bit about the gray area, whether or not it needs to be, you know, what happens if it's outside the land use provisions, et cetera. I'm not suggesting that we'll have much clearer answer by the next council meeting, but if council would like, we can request to see if the, our attorney can come in to also provide that guidance from, from her perspective, instead of us, again, and myself included, as not a legal expert to be able to provide that guidance.
And also know that I asked for our two state legislators to be here tonight. Jennifer Buncombe and Mr. Tim Moffett to be here tonight to, to hear this concern, you know? It don't affect a lot of municipalities and a lot of counties, but this particular one, at this particular time, it does. So, but they was unable to be here, so, but we still ask them to be here, but remember that.
I, I will say that they were both open, they were unfortunately not able to make it this evening, but they were willing and open, open to continue conversations and communications in the weeks to come.
All right. So do we need this like a little five-minute break? It's nine o'clock, we've been here since six, six-thirty. Let's take a little five-minute break and we'll jump right back on this and we'll try to get this knocked out. Let's take a little five minute break and we'll jump right back on this and we'll try to get it started.
Yeah, there, Palmer.
Yeah, alright, uh, we took a brief break, uh, took a few minutes. Uh, I need council to, uh, so we can keep a meeting moving to, uh, make a motion on this floodplain issue to either table it, approve it, or deny it.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if, if you all are amenable to it, I would, I would ask that Mr. Malacheck just provide you again, just a quick overview of the timeline and, and what you would actually be approving, denying, or tabling.
Okay, sounds good.
So the, the main consideration tonight is, is does town council want to initiate the text amendment process? Because if we want to meet the six month window to have the retroactive, retroactive applicability for Helene affected properties, specifically the ones requesting individual assistance, ideally, we would have that direction tonight. That doesn't mean the programs approved tonight. It would mean we would start that process. Um, if, if council waited, we'd probably be missing that deadline. I'd have to look at the exact dates. But that's specifically the direction staff's looking for tonight.
Has, has anyone come in here, uh, asking for us to move this along for their benefit?
Not to my knowledge. It's Malacheck?
No.
No.
My suggestion for staff would be to reach out to our, uh, lawyer and discuss some of these implications that we uh, tightened it up and see what she says. And if we, was to table this, I would like to see her present at the next meeting and have it the first thing on the regular agenda to try to get her out of here quickly we could, or work it to her convenience timeline or something.
If I may just get a, a confirmation from the rest of the council as well for that action. Okay.
To talk to the lawyer?
Have the attorney here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so are you good with us making a motion at this point?
Uh, I believe then, and I'll, I'll look to the clerk to, to guide us on this, but it, that, my recommendation then would be to motion to table this discussion to a future meeting.
When's that meeting?
We got moved.
They got moved, but when?
Yes, I believe, I would have to go back and look. I believe it's the seventh. Yes, I believe it's the seventh of February.
At nine o'clock?
Yes.
Uh, that would work. That would get a chance to meet before we meet.
Yes, our next meeting is February thirteenth.
Okay.
So I'm comfortable with table until the thirteenth and that gives us the time to talk to the agriculture committee. But I would, this is a message to the agriculture committee. Is in, I speak for Brian, I'm not speaking for the rest of me. Don't come to the table with no. Come to the table with what can work for agriculture. So that we can talk about, you know, I just don't want to get like no, you know, because that's not solving problems in Mills River. Let's just kick them down the road. Let's work on solutions together and collaborate and come up with something where everybody can.
Okay.
Are we asking them to come back with alternative solutions that's being used outside of the town of Mills River right now? So we can understand that aspect of it?
I think so. I mean, I've talked to people that, you know, and I talked to, I'm not gonna, I talked to someone at the county who deals with floodplain stuff. And I said, so if I, if a, if a field floods and I go in there and dig up the topsoil and, and he said, yeah, I was like, do I need a permit? He said, no. So I don't know. Don't ask me.
Okay.
Ju- just for clarification, you're asking the ag advisory council, okay. Just want, just wanted to make sure if it's not a guidance to staff.
Yes.
Come with the opinions, but also come with solutions.
Understood.
Yeah, okay. Alright, I'll, I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion that we table this until our next meeting.
February thirteenth.
February thirteenth.
On second.
If second, uh, any more discussion on this, boy, ask for a vote. Hear none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any vote? Hear none? We'll table it till the thirteenth. Alright, uh, here we go.
Yes, uh, uh, Mayor and Council, I'll just quickly mention that this, uh, item D on your regular agenda is a carryover from the last uh, agenda, or the, the last council meeting where council requested that this be then moved to this meeting. Now, the, the version that is in your book, uh, as and council provided this option for us, is modified slightly from the previous one that you had. We added a couple of whereas statements in there. Uh, again, for your consideration, uh, at this point, I don't, I'm going to look at Mr. Malacheck to see if there's anything additional from his perspective, uh, to orient us. I will say, uh, Mr. Mayor, as you did mention, I did reach out to, uh, our state representatives, both returned, uh, thanking us for, uh, the invitation. They were unable to make it. But again, are willing to have conversation moving forward.
Okay. I sure hope so. Um, that's the only one. Don't get us started.
Cool.
Discussion.
Going back to the state representatives, can you ask them to give us a couple of dates where they could come?
I think that's what I asked for.
Would you ask for to come to this meeting?
Well, or a meeting, or give us a time that they could meet.
I, I am, I'm, i- if council so directs me, I'm happy to do so.
Let's, yeah, definitely make that happen. Preferably the morning of the night. They can get in on that too, because it all ties together.
Is that, is this the February seventh ag advisor? Yes, sir.
If they can. If they can't, the thirteenth.
If they can't, send them a schedule of all our council meetings and tell them to pick a day.
But tell them time is of the essence on this. So discussion on, on this, anybody got any? If not, I'll get it started.
Even getting started.
Good.
Okay. So I need to know council's opinion and what I'm missing by going, when we went to the LGCCA meeting the other day, this was an agenda item. And the Chair of Harris County Commissioners, uh, Mr. William Lapsley wanted us to hold off on our individuals' potential resolutions. I, I do not understand that. Uh, I didn't get a chance to talk to him. I've talked to him in the past about it. Um, um, I need to know staff's level, independent people's level, or council level. Is there just that much more benefit in bundling all this together versus us going ahead and implementing ours now? Because I, I don't like it now. I ain't gonna like it a bit more three weeks from now, a month from now, six weeks from now. I don't like it now. I think it's a big overreach. So if it was up to me, I would sign this resolution effective immediately, but I have other council to, uh, counsel me on this. Uh, where, am I missing the boat? Is there a political aspect to this in some form or fashion? Cause I'd like to know. Cause if something like this, is this political? And I hope everybody is watching and this gets, goes, uh, viral, as they say. This is a massive overreach for the state of North Carolina. Democrat, Republicans, whoever, whatever. I do not agree with it, whatever party affiliated done this. Uh, this has took a lot of zoning power away from us. I don't feel like it's fair for our taxpayers to have to wonder why we ain't doing something. That's bullshit. I'm an elected official. I don't make a whole lot of money, but I am here to represent the eight thousand people of this town, give or take however many they are. And also the people visiting this town. This affects them. Be it Airbnbs, be it whatever, i- it affects everybody and I do not like this. And I cannot get my local representatives to understand my stance on this. They say, well, when my phone rings, sir, they're praising this, but I cannot understand that. And they can't make me understand it and they do not understand me when I try to explain it. Just the being held tight to these zoning regulations is one thing, but I'm sitting here spending a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, give or take, on a UDO rewrite. And Islam will not be worth the paper it's wrote on when we get it done. It's going to be, have to be altered immediately. This is silly. From town, local, and state, it's silly. And I hope they get to see this. I beg them to call me tomorrow. I do. I mean, I voted for both of y'all and a lot of others in this, in this state that's, that's had this, but I do not agree with this. Now, I've been it, but I, I want to know if anybody knows anything, because this is dire to my heart. This is the one thing that this town that I feel like my job is and it feels like it's been took away. I told Mr. Moffett, I'd just soon go home and just sit on the couch and watch TV. Let's stay running. You've took all the power away from me.
They want you to do it, yeah.
I know. Huh?
Can I sign your resolution?
Yeah, yeah, I can't ride it. I'll have to.
Yours is a lot better than theirs. Um, and I, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you say. I, I agree with you. I think that all of us are very much in favor of property rights. I, it's on my campaign page, but also people that watch the planning board know that I was in favor of the, uh, the change from Mills River. I voted, we voted unanimous to go from MRMU to MRRR. And the reason is MRMU doesn't work everywhere. It just doesn't. It's not good for people that live there, have no control over what can show up beside them. And, um, I do see that there is strength in numbers a lot of times. But it's something that is part of our resolution that you've got there is it points out the uniqueness of Mills River. Towns like Montre, they're a hundred percent built out. It's not going to affect. Even Asheville, you know, a lot of the zoning's done. You know, a lot, Hendersonville. But Mills River, we've got a lot of areas that it really affects that'll impact people's lives. So I think that if we want to go ahead and send it, we send it. And when a bunch of other people send one, we'll join that one too. But by getting it in front of people now, maybe our opportunity to point out the unique damage it is causing to Mills River uh, for property rights. It, it hurts me to tell someone what you can and can't do on their property, on your property. But Mills River mixed use, that just doesn't work everywhere. There's places it can be fine, but there's a lot of places that zoning is not the right fit. So that's my opinion.
I understand the heartburn with the mixed use and I understand wanting to go to rural residential. Um, when we went through this, I said from day one, the problem I have with it is the text amendment that we passed that point blank told residents what they can and cannot do with their property. Now, if it comes down to density, I don't have a problem. Now, if it comes down to density, I don't have a problem with changing density. But when you start saying you can have a garage, you cannot have a garage, um, you can have. I think there was shooting ranges and it, it listed a whole list of things that you could have and things you couldn't have. And what you couldn't have is what seems to be what's useful sometimes. And it's, it's heartburn. And do I want to be the first to stick my head out on a chopping block for people to come and say, well, we're going to sue you? No. Um, do I want to see Mills River get devastated and people come in and build things that aren't wanted here? No. So it's a hard decision. I really.
But the thing is, Sandra, you say that's a hard decision. We don't even have that decision.
Correct.
That's what this, this is what this argument's about. We don't even have that decision. That's been taken away from us. And I hope that you understand that completely, that the state has stripped us of doing any of that or, you know, we can leave it as is, but even if you wanted to pull one of those things out of mixed use, you couldn't do that right now. You couldn't say, well, we're just not going to let this happen because, you know, we, this is just not a fit for Mills River, period. But you can't change it at all right now. Until this is changed, we got what we got and we ain't doing nothing about it. It's just not fair.
Looting up flood.
Yeah, if we wanted, if we wanted to send it to the planning board immediately to, to come up with some floodplain ordinances of our own, to act on those blue and hash lines, we can't. Can't do it. It's what we got, it's what we got. You know, I spent air on the phone this evening with the, with the lawyer. And the way I understood it is no, we can't just jump on back on another resolution's back on this particular item, the kind of way she spelled it. If you get yours out front, you know.
Yeah, I think we're closer to the town of Mills River residents than our state legislators are through no fault of them. It's just that we're here every two weeks. We've got a planning board every month and they don't come to Mills River every two weeks or once a month, you know? So even if we decide to leave MRMU the way it is, it should be our decision. It should be council's decision, not the legislator's, legislature's decision.
Well, what about with, um, the voluntary downzoning that they talked about where if the landowner wants to come in and sign, then they can do it.
But what's feasibility of that? Well, like we was talking about doing the whole 280 corridor from, say, Schoolhouse Road. If we wanted to try to implement that, it would take a year to get around and get signatures if everybody wanted to sign on.
Not if they're excited about it.
Yeah, but then we can't just do, blotch them in because that ain't fair to, you know, we just can't do that to staff because then they're out there inspecting one thing and they don't know if they're in it or out of it. It's just not, you know? Yeah, it would be, to me, that would, that would be more like spot zoned than anything I've ever seen before in my life, to be honest with you, if we just, if they even allowed that, just to be a one off here, there and the other. Uh, but it, you can do that. It is allowed.
Mm-hmm.
It is allowed. All right. You got it. But no, he's gone.
That's for last. Come on.
So I, I agree. I think that as far as the resolution goes, we should do our own resolution because this affects us differently than it affects everyone else. Um, in terms of a town age, we're 20 years old. I mean, we're just getting into zoning. Where are these other municipalities and counties? They've been around for, you know, 10s, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 100 years. So they're well into their zoning. The only thing that affects them is if there's a new use, like vape shops, you know? So then it's like they can't take that use out. So it's like, but that's minimal to them. You know, that doesn't have a big impact, you know? And I think we have to take the fight and we're going to have to lead the fight on this because no one's going to fight for us, first off, and it affects us different. And if we don't take the fight to them, then all the developers are out here still doing everything that they're doing as fast as they can. And we're losing the battle every day, every day, every day. You're losing the battle. So if we don't do something fast, then I think that we're missing out. And I agree with you. I've talked to, uh, a representative who was outside this area and he said the same thing. Well, I hadn't gotten any calls and we might complain about it. And, and I think it's so, it's not so much that we know it, we're educated on it. So that's why we have a problem with it. Honestly, I think we should be doing social media posts on our webpage. We should be doing to educate the citizens in Mills River about how this affects them so that they can start calling, start giving, posting numbers to our legislative members on the, on our webpage or on a social post, you know, and tell them why they need to be calling them. But let's drive the initiative, you know?
Because to be honest with you, the, the way the downzoning, being in the verbiage, it makes you feel, even me, when I first seen it, well, okay, we're just not going to be able to make slot sizes any smaller right now. But that's totally, when you get to reading it in the description, it's totally the opposite. You can't increase or, or restrict anything.
The city couldn't even keep vape shops away from our schools. Their attorney said that law is.
Mm-hmm.
And can't protect our kids.
Especially since it's, it's retroactive 180 days.
Mm-hmm.
That tells you it was created to benefit someone.
Mm-hmm.
It was put in there to benefit someone. And that's where I have the problem is, you know, my goal on council is to never put myself or any one person's wants above the best interest of the town. And I wish that all politicians that, that, unfortunately, they don't.
And I, I totally agree with you, Sandra, about a, uh, being the, the test case. Totally agree. I would not want to pass a text amendment that violated the law, but I think it's okay for us to say we don't like the law. So we're not, we're not going to violate it, but we're just saying, hey, this, you know, this ain't right what you're doing to this. And my wife's watching us use ain't for emphasis. And Mrs. Bress, you didn't teach me to say the word ain't. Sometimes you use it for emphasis and, and the surgical use of profanity sometimes, right?
Yeah, I can't help it.
They got Patrick. So it's good.
If, if, if I may, just to reorient ourselves to this, the, the resolution before you, um, is a step. If there is future action by a, a larger entity or a, a request to join a letter or something, this, uh, moving on this item does not preclude you from taking those actions at a future time. Um, the, as we talked about the last meeting as well, now there are varying opinions on how strong, uh, resolution is, is, uh, is seen, but it is a step, uh, that council can take if they so choose. Um, but I would also add is for council's consideration, uh, there is a local bill deadline that is coming forward. Uh, I believe it's February 13th, but I'm going to look at it as it had not, February 13th, uh, which is also the next council meeting. Um, but there, there is the option for this council to also then ask staff to move forward with, uh, that process so that we can meet that again. Not to say that you should or should not, that is for your consideration, but that is another step, uh, to push through, then with our state legislators, uh, uh, through that local bill process.
But we've got to have someone to present that, correct?
I would confirm.
Yeah, if I can elaborate. So for, for the state senate, local bills must be requested from the legislature's staff by February 13th. So we would have to request something from Mr. Moffett by then. If we want to go through Representative Balkum, uh, for the House, local bills have to be requested by their staff by February 20th. Now beyond that, those representatives, if it was the state senate, would have to file the bill basically about two weeks later, February 27th for the senate and about the same, uh, for the House. Uh, the original request, February 20th, it would have to be filed by the representative in the senate by March 6th. So the, the deadlines are approaching.
And for everybody watching, the local bill would exempt us from, or it would allow us as a single entity.
Yes, sir.
To be exempt from the provisions.
If it passed.
If it passed.
Yes, sir. And, and if I may, just for that clarification, yes, we would have to have somebody who would bring that forward again. It would be one, uh, be Senator Moffett and Representative Balkum. The, um, but the, uh, council could direct staff to, uh, to work on those steps to at least start those conversations in that process. Um, again, it's a process that I would have to get myself, uh, you know, acclimated to, but that's something that we could look at if you so choose.
I feel like you need to reach out to both of those and see if they would be willing to present a bill. If not, we're going to need to, I'm, I'm assuming we could reach outside of our district if they was unwilling to try to find somebody to present. Anyone in either house, either chamber can present, correct?
That, that is my understanding, yes. And, and I would just a, ask for councils, as a whole, the council's direction on whether or not that is something that you would like for us to pursue.
And I'll be honest, I'd just like to see if they're that interested.
I'll just do what we got, totally.
We'll see. I mean, if they're, if they're, if they're friends or not.
No, I agree. And I mean, even, even if they give us a window, I mean, I can understand the man, I want to say, we're going to give you an indefinite exemption. If they say, we'll give you 20 years or 10 years. You know what I'm saying? That gives us time to get our zoning in place.
So you feel like this is going to be a, uh, this could be a lifetime thing?
I think you have to, I always operate under the assumption that things are the way they are and you don't anticipate that they're going to change for your favor. So.
I feel, I.
Real we have right now is that.
We're dead opposite because I feel like I pressure, pressure, pressure. I'm going to make something change.
I, I say realtors have, realtors have deep pockets. This was hold done because somebody's got deep pockets and their deep pockets are deeper than mine, so.
So, uh, what we going to do with this resolution? I'd like a motion.
You got it?
What does this resolution do?
It just lets, it just lets them at the state know that we're, well, if you, if you read it, it lets whoever gets a chance to read it, and I can't promise you who will read it, that this is what, how we feel about it.
Okay.
Uh, at council's direction, I would recommend that we, um, would send, if it passed, send this to our representatives.
And they should carry it forward.
Okay.
Should carry it forward. I would hope. No, I don't, I don't make motions in here.
You can.
I usually break ties, but I can't even do that tonight.
Let me find the official motion in here. I think there's one, isn't there? It's the green one. Um, I make the motion to adopt resolution 2025 dash zero one as written.
Thanks, sir. How about a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? I just will say that I hope each chamber individually, each member of each chamber reads this and understands that Mills River is not happy with this little portion of this big bill. And I'll leave it at that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? Send it on, sir.
Put the resolution on the social media page.
Oh. Uh, staff?
We can. Yeah, it won't be an issue. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, moving on to other business. Kevin, any, anybody? Uh, so what we'll do now is we'll, I need a motion to adjourn our regular meeting and then we'll.
I'll make a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
All right. And Brian, second. Uh, any discussion on why we're quitting this one and going into the next one? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now I need a motion to go into our business portion meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
It's getting late, so say every other word.
We got 30.
I'll keep using that joke.
No, it's, I, if, uh, for that purpose, uh, Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I'll jump in. Uh, yeah, so this item again was added or it's kept on the business meeting, uh, per council's request, the last council meeting, just in case there were, uh, other updates that may be necessary for conversation. Um, from the staff's perspective, we've provided those, uh, those updates during the last conversation.
Okay. Any, uh, questions or any more discussion on this? Okay. Uh, potential future agenda items. Somebody got something?
I think I had asked about the blackboard for the emergency for the county notification.
Mm-hmm.
And you had said that it was going to be a budget item, but I feel like we need to discuss it before the budget comes up.
Mm-hmm.
That way, um, everybody's on board with what it provides.
And just for clarification for those in the room as well, there, uh, you're, you're speaking of an, an emergency response system, um, that the town of Mills River may choose to, uh, adopt as a, as a notification system.
Right.
Yes.
It's, um, Laura Park currently has it that I know of and it's like a, people call in and register, um, put their phone numbers in and their addresses. And if the town chooses to send out flood notices, like we went through with Halleene, um, inclement weather and stuff, they can hit a button and send out one mass text.
Sure.
And it, it's a good program to have. If you have, um, an amber alert for the community, they can send it out. A silver alert, they can send it out.
My understanding, the county's getting ready to do something with this on the emergency side, um, that would incorporate EM, all this other stuff. So my direction would be just make sure that we pick a software or a platform that can work with theirs.
Understood. And if, and i- if this is something that council would like for us to, again, move forward on a potential item, what I would, uh, do as the first step is to reach out to our county partners to see what they're doing as well and see what, what may be coming down the pipe from their perspective. There's also a code red system, for instance, that may, from the state, you know, that may have different other, uh, alert systems that are in there. So we'll try to pull that information together, uh, and then, and then go from there if that's a, that's amenable to council.
Well, and that way we can have a, a roundabout cost too for the budget and nowhere it'll fit in.
Understood. Understood.
Um, I would just, um, a couple things. Thank everybody for being here. Um, I would ask that people that want to show up, uh, love to have our farmers come in with how specifically the NFIP would affect their daily operations. And any, any of that detail they could bring would help. And it's, that's, that's really about all we got.
So one thing, and this is just a, it's not really an agenda item. It's a look into, I know the, uh, North Carolina, the criminal, or not criminal, the cyber threat thing, um, they're recommending that everybody on the government agency switch from Oregon.gov. So just radar.
Yes, sir. Yeah, on the, duly noted. Uh, if I may, I'll just quickly add, uh, a couple of items I'd mentioned earlier. The, uh, as we move through the FEMA projects list, uh, if it's, uh, again, open to council's approval to maybe either at the next meeting or the meeting after, provide that FEMA project update for yourselves and for, and for the community on where we're at with that and what they can expect, especially on the, uh, area. And then also, uh, we have concluded the HR assessment with Craft HR and, and, and also the personnel policy, uh, updates and recommendations. And so if, if council is open to it, to try to slot them in to an, an upcoming council meeting for them, uh, as our contractors to provide that kind of input for you all because from that, there will be potential personnel policy updates that we will need to address, uh, again, council approves, so.
That'll work them into a non-busy agenda.
I'll do my best. Yes, sir.
We have any?
Okay. Uh, anything else? Hear none?
Make a motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, second, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.